Good evening and welcome to the inaugural board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. As Director of Education and Secretary to the Board, I'll be chairing the meeting until the election of the Chair and Vice Chair are completed. Please note this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustees are reminded to turn off your mic and camera on your devices until you're recognized to speak. Please only use the chat box to type "hand up." Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. I'd ask staff to please start us off with a land acknowledgement. Thank you. Student Trustee Tokiwah, would you please lead us in opening prayer, the National Anthem, and the Oath of Citizenship?
Thank you, Mr. Daley. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for our sinners now and at the hour of our death, amen. Please join us for the singing of our National Anthem and the land acknowledgement.
There were no motions adopted in camera. There was no information received in camera. Move to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda this evening? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Director Daley. I have a point of order regarding, I'd like to bring to your attention, the criteria for notices of motion as set out in our Bylaw 9.2, Bullet 2, which states that they shall be submitted in writing at the regular board meeting of the Board and recorded in its minutes for consideration by the Board at its next regular meeting. So I'd like to inquire regarding items 9.2, 9.3, 9.4, and 9.5, which were notices of motion from last board meeting, if this criteria was fulfilled. I ask because as trustees, we received the written notice later, later than usual. We received them Wednesday night and not during the day. And I just further like to add that prior to last board meeting, Bullet 5 of Bylaw, the same Bylaw 9.2, which states that the notice of motion shall be accompanied by an explanatory note prior to the draft agenda being distributed, that was strictly followed last board meeting in regards to a notice of motion that was then subsequently removed off the agenda.
So trustee Carabella, just one through your point of order is that items 9.1 to 9.5 should not be on the agenda for the reasons you gave?
I'd like clarification on when they were submitted at the time, and if it doesn't meet the criteria of the Tuesday evening, they should be submitted in writing on the Tuesday of the board meeting, then I would request that they be postponed or taken off. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Carabella. So trustees received the, received the notes shortly after they were submitted to my office and would have received them in advance of the draft agenda or with the draft agenda going out. I believe in the past, while what you mentioned in the, in the, the Bylaw is accurate, in the past, we have allowed some leeway with regards to notices of motion, oftentimes when meetings have ended prior to being able to finish the agenda. In some cases, we've received that information the next day after midnight because the meeting's gone that long, in other cases, received it during the day. So there is some precedent for receiving that information after the meeting. As such, I would rule against your point of order.
And would they have to be received during the business day of the Wednesday? Thank you.
I don't think we've established a set protocol, trustee Carabella, for when those notes are received. I don't believe we've had a consistent, I think what we've asked for is to try and get them the next day, and certainly in the other instance that you raised, the notes were not provided prior to the draft agenda going out. So I've made my ruling, and I'll move on unless there's any other questions.
Point of order, Secretary Daley, with all due respect, you appear on this particular agenda, item 4, for the purpose of electing the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Board. You cannot act as Secretary and Chair of the Board. That is a conflicting interest, which would make it illegal. I would ask that you defer from making any further rulings on this matter. I would ask that the parliamentarian be asked to rule on this, but I believe that trustee Carabella is correct, regardless of the fact that we made some adjustments.
Thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi. I will, I will ask the parliamentarian for his opinion. Thank you.
I'm not finished. Although we've made some exceptions in the past, the fact of the matter is, if we wish to proceed tonight, then we would ask that, I would ask that, by a two-thirds majority, we make exceptions to this particular because it wasn't brought to the Board before as a point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
What's your point of order, trustee Guzzo?
Thank you. You've already decided on this. You've, you've made your ruling. I would ask that we move on.
Mr. Chair, I had my hand up ahead of time. I would like to raise a point of order as well.
What's your point of order, trustee DeRosa?
I think all point of orders are subjective to appeal. I'd like to appeal it. I'd like to substantiate my appeal and then take a vote.
Okay, I'm not sure what you mean by substantiate your appeal. I'm happy to.
I can speak to it. I can speak to it.
Oh, sure, sure. Go ahead, trustee DeRosa.
So my appeal is based on the fact that.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, trustee Guzzo?
It's not debatable. It's an appeal. It goes straight to a vote.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. So trustee DeRosa is appealing the ruling against the point of order raised by trustee Carabella, so we can take that to a vote? Trustee Agnew, are you in favor of the appeal or opposed to the appeal?
I'm opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Yan Tomasi?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee O'Brien?
I'm standing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
I'm opposed.
And trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
So the appeal fails. We'll move on to.
Sorry, sorry, Director Daley.
Oh, I'm sorry, student trustee, sorry. I'm just learning this job here. Student trustee Bowie?
Opposed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Student trustee Mazri Amar?
Opposed.
Student trustee Tokiwah?
Opposed.
Thank you. So we do need a mover to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Trustee O'Brien?
No, Mr. Chair, I had my hand up.
Trustee O'Brien, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Chair, item 11.3, monthly budget report. This item deals with budget, occasional teacher salaries are mentioned in this report. My wife is an occasional teacher, therefore I will be declaring a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you, trustee O'Brien. We just, we're trying to get the agenda approved first, but I'll note your, your conflict of interest. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I will, trustee Guzzo.
Trustee Murphy, seconded by trustee Guzzo. We'll take it to a vote. Trustee Murphy? Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
I'm in favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Yan Tomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte? Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Declarations of conflict of interest, we have trustee O'Brien declaring.
Mr. Daley?
I'm so sorry.
Oh, thanks for the reminder. You guys are good. Student trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Thank you. Student trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Student trustee Tokiwah?
In favor.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Declarations of conflict, trustee O'Brien has declared a conflict. Any other declarations of conflict of interest?
Mr. Chair, I would like to do the same for the same reasons, with respect to the salary line only.
Thank you. That's trustee DeRosa. Noted?
Will I be called in when we are done with the salary line?
Can we?
Oh, connection for some reason.
Okay, we're gonna move on. We'll move to item 4.1, elections of, election of the Chair of the Board. Will now proceed to the election of the Chair of the Board for the period December 7th, 2021, to the inaugural board meeting in December of 2022. Should a vote by ballot become necessary this evening, Superintendent Kroll and Oldman will act as scrutineers while I tabulate the ballots. As per, as per our Board Bylaws, trustees present at the meeting by electronic means and who choose to vote may at the time the votes are being cast, cast his or her vote by means of a private telephone conversation or by email with the scrutineer, who shall mark the vote on a paper ballot, the same form and manner as though the ballots had been marked in person by the voter, and the ballots shall then be included with the other ballots to be counted. The ballots cast electronically in this matter are subject to the same obligations of confidentiality on the part of the scrutineer as those cast by voters physically at the meeting. According to our Board Bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of Chair must be duly moved and seconded and received by the Secretary of the Board. So I'll now ask for nominations to come forward.
Secretary?
Trustee Murphy?
I'd like to nominate trustee Duarte.
Sorry, trustee O'Brien is correct. His, his hand was up at 7:23. Trustee O'Brien, my apologies. Over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No worries. Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate trustee Duarte.
Trustee Duarte nominated by, or moved by trustee O'Brien. Do we have a seconder?
I'd like to second that.
Trustee Murphy seconds. Trustee Duarte, do you accept the nomination for the position of Chair of the Board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I accept the nomination.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. Are there any other nominations for the position of Chair of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate trustee Yan Tomasi.
Moved by trustee DeRosa, nomination for trustee Yan Tomasi. Do I have a seconder?
Carabella?
Trustee Carabella seconds. Trustee Yan Tomasi, do you accept the nomination for the position of Chair of the Board?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, point of privilege. Can we all have our cameras off if we're not speaking? It's a little distracting for me to focus.
Thank you. So we'll just ask, remind trustees, and I'll turn mine off in a second, remind trustees to keep your cameras off until, until recognized. Are there any other further nominations for the position of Chair of the Board? I'll call a second time, any further nominations to come forward? And a third time, any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, could I get a mover and a seconder to close the nominations for the position of Chair of the Board? Can I get a mover, please?
Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Agnew, seconded by?
Murphy.
Trustee Murphy. All in favor to close nominations for the position of Chair of the Board?
In favor.
Any opposed? I'd like now to give each nominee for Chair an opportunity, if they wish, to say a few words and allow trustees to ask any questions of the candidate prior to a vote. Trustee Duarte, do you wish to say a few words?
Yes, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank trustee Murphy and trustee O'Brien for nominating me for the position of Chair of the Board. I'm inputting my name forward. I had to give this some serious thought. I will now present to you my thought process, along with my qualifications and experience and assurance for this position, and I will leave it up to you to make the call. For those of you that do not know me, I possess a degree in electrical engineering and have worked for thirty years in field of electronics, presently in a high-tech organization in the area. I presently have a child in the system, and in the past, I have sat on seven different school councils in various capacities in Milton, over ten years. So I say I understand the operation of the school and school councils very well. I ran for trustee position with a vision of supporting our students and staff in all the three pillars, teaching, believing, and belonging, and I emphasize all three pillars. I've been privileged in the past to have been unanimously claimed as Vice Chair for two consecutive years, and this is a lot. And I have done my very best in the role of Vice Chair in strongly supporting past Chair Yan Tomasi and Chair Murphy. I initially had no experience coming into this role, but I stayed very positive. I worked very hard. I am fairly confident of being able to fill the large shoes of past Chair Murphy. Over the past two years, I've taken upon myself and have organized professional development sessions on various topics for trustees. I've attended meetings, taken on the role of multi-year strategic planning committee, co-chaired the STEM Committee, which had a wonderful outcome. I am in schools regularly. I visit schools, attend school meetings, school council meetings, and school events. I've been visiting schools across the board, in every region, every other Friday of my day off, along with director Daley and trustee Murphy in the past and used to be trustee Yan Tomasi, along with the local trustees. This is often because of COVID, so in short, I would say I walk the walk and I talk the talk. If you have been watching our board meetings over the past years, you would have observed my collaborative and professional approach, and I have always acted in decorum and have been very respectful of every trustee and staff. I have a very cordial, positive relationship with all trustees, and this is a requirement for the Chair. I do have a thorough understanding of the role of the Chair, and I'm able to meet and exceed those expectations. The Chair is not a boss, but a referee who facilitates meeting, provides information to trustees for making good decisions while keeping the focus on our mission, vision, and value. If it is your will for me to take on the role of Chair, I guarantee you absolute fairness that meetings will be objectively conducted moving forward in accordance with our Bylaws and trustee code of conduct. I presented my qualifications, experience, insurance, and brief, and by the way, if you have been talking about diversity, look no further. We have a year to earn back some of our reputation. Let's grab the opportunity and forge ahead. With utmost integrity, I humbly present myself to you as a candidate for the position of Chair of the Board. I would also like to assure you that in case I'm not a successful candidate, I will work very closely with the new Chair and all of you trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. I think we do have a few questions. Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Duarte. So I have two questions for you. My first question would be, if you were elected as Chair of the Board, what do you think is the most important trait for an individual to have to become a successful Chair of our Halton Catholic District School Board?
We have had a very rough batch. You all know that. So I look at myself as somebody who can work with everybody, our trustees. We have wonderful people around the table. We have people coming from different backgrounds with different experiences and knowledge. My strong point is how can I channelize and bring that information together? I have no problems reaching out to different, to all trustees, and I have no point, no problem at all in asking the right questions and working with people. So that's my strong point, working with people, trying to be a good referee.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. So my second half of that question would be, what do you think would be a trait that maybe is not necessarily so positive to be Chair of a Halton Catholic District School Board?
That's a very tough question, trustee Zernota. Some, being unfair, being unfair, and not listening to other trustees around the table, that's not desirable. Keeping a positive outlook is what's very desirable, and I think I bring that quality to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I have two questions for trustee Duarte. One is, is we've been moving towards the commitment of equity in our Board. I want to know what your commitment will be in moving towards that and, and what your position you think as a Chair, if you were to be elected, how you help facilitate that?
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Excellent question. So equity, diversity, and inclusion, that's a big yes for me. You know very well, the past, my track record does prove my words, and it does prove where I look, where I've been supportive in the past. There's no other way other than these three things that I talked about. We need to move forward. We need to keep an open mind. We need to be positive. We need to know who we serve. The reason I'm here is because I've been put here by my great peers. They've chosen me for a reason. So, so trustee Guzzo, my mind is positive. It will not be my personal beliefs that make decision here table. It has never been, and I can assure you that I will do an excellent job with, with trying to get everybody support and bringing everybody on the same page as far as equity, inclusion, and diversity is concerned.
Thank you. And I have one other question, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Yep, that's fine, trustee Guzzo.
In your, and in, in your, your speech, and you talk, you talk a lot about your qualifications and, and your constituents and the parents and visiting schools, but nowhere did I hear you talk about how you will help amplify the student voice or what you will do to make sure that they're heard and that we move it forward. What will you, as a Chair, do to make sure and to ensure that our student voice is heard and amplified, particularly those that are marginalized?
Thank you, trustee. Again, another good question. So as I mentioned to you, I have been visiting schools, school councils, listening to parents. I've been, parents have been writing to me. I've been getting their solutions. I've been visiting with, I just visited with alum in past Chair Murphy to, with the Students Senate. We met with them, chatted with them. We have conversations with our amazing student trustees, and that's the conversation that they had. As I mentioned before, I do visit schools and talk to, talk to the school councils, and that's another area where I get feedback from. I look forward to feedback, and without feedback, I will not improve. And so that's what helped me. Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you, trustee Duarte. I don't see any other hands up for questions. Seeing none, trustee Yan Tomasi, would you like to make a statement?
I would, Mr. Chair. Like my colleague, Vice Chair Duarte, I would also like to thank my nominator and my seconder. So I'll begin. The challenges of leadership is the delicate balance of discernment, strength, conviction, resolve, humility, receptiveness, and collaboration in the pursuit of how to be faithful to the gospel values. These are the required characteristics of leaders in Catholic education. As Catholic trustees candidates, in 2018, we were elected and called to oversee the care for 35,000 children whose parents chose to entrust them to this Catholic School Board. As Catholic trustee-elect, we took the oath to advocate for and to ensure that our curriculum espouses Catholic values that teach students to be resilient in the challenges of their daily lives and as they support their peers in their uniqueness. Faith formation is central to this process. Faith formation is central to this process because its purpose is to constantly remind students that it's okay to embrace their individual uniqueness as a gift and for them to know they matter since we're all created in God's image. Ministry mandated curriculum must be delivered through a Catholic lens so as to enable our teachers to further instill in our students that being cool and practicing social justice is at the heart of being a Catholic. The goal is to teach students to always look to our community with eyes of kindness, hope, compassion, and love for one another. It's the role of the Chair and the Director to ensure that the ministry legislation is followed through proper use of procedural bylaws and governance policies, which are designed to treat everyone equitably. Together, the Chair, the Secretary-Director should honor bylaws created to align both with our faith and legislation as it is imparted by the Ministry of Education. A Catholic School Board has a duty to help children succeed, but also to teach them how to make moral decisions, expand their knowledge of our faith-based trials and successes of previous generations, which fosters a sense of values, which combined fosters a sense of identity and values. When combined, they all contribute to the preparedness of both academic and life journeys. Let us be cognizant. We are here as servants for the betterment of the system, not individual agendas to further specific causes. Our advocacy matters to the whole student body. In our leadership role, we must seek to be trusted, dedicated, empathetic, and respectful towards one another as we work together through the unique challenges of a Catholic system. We are not staff, and staff are not trustees. The Board is a legally separate governing body elected by Catholics with a fiduciary duty to Catholics while supporting all students in our publicly funded system. The ministry funds the corporate board through the GSN and other programs. This money received must be spent to deliver curriculum according to the priorities found in the trustees' multi-year strategic plan, imported from the Ministry of Education legislated directives. It's the Secretary of the Board and his or her role as Director that operationalizes the policies handed to him by the Board, by trustees. And it's through the Board's procedural bylaws and policies we hold the Director and all employees accountable, the purpose of which is to ensure that the Ministry of Education legislation is adhered to. We are the guardians of ministry mandated public policy, vetted and delivered through a Catholic lens, and are protected to run our publicly funded Catholic faith-based education by the Canadian Charter under the Denominational Rights Clause. While the language found in the Education Act is written specifically for public boards, the same act recognizes Catholic education and it gives it the legal power to write its governing policies and procedures to reflect Catholic gospel values, which do not infringe on the rights of non-Catholics. As Catholic trustees, we are called to inspire a compelling Catholic vision whilst challenging the process, empower others to act and model the way to lead spiritually from within with a belief that something wonderful happens daily in the classroom to the children we're entrusted with through faith-based learning centered on home, school, and parish. Saint John Cantius speaks to this when he said, "What kind of work can be more noble than to assist to cultivate the minds of young people, guarding it carefully so that the knowledge and love of God and His holy precepts go hand in hand with learning?" He speaks indirectly to the role of teachers and trustees by saying, "To form young Christians and citizens, isn't this the most beautiful and noble-minded way to make use of life, of one's talents and energy?" Let us be reminded that trustees, teachers, administrators, and support staff are parents too, and that the very best administrators remember what it's like to be a teacher, and teachers remember what it's like to be students. Many teachers, administrators, and support staff may go unnoticed, but they are the same teachers, support staff, and administrators who daily, discreetly, and with a hidden presence through their intercession, support and guide our students in good and difficult times. What is important tonight is that as we embark on the last year of our mandate, we build on the experiences, influences, deliberations, actions taken in the past three years, which have brought us to the point we are now. We cannot change the past, but by understanding it, we can learn so that as individual trustees and functioning as a board, we can move forward no matter who is elected Chair or Vice. Because it's not our differences that divide us, it's our inability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences. Remember, the Board and senior staff decisions must deliver achieving, believing, belonging. It's our Catholic culture that responds to every child's needs equitably because it hears them, sees them, and supports them. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Yan Tomasi. Are there any questions for Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee O'Hearn Jernolta.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Yan Tomasi. So I just have one question. We right now have two individuals that are vying for the seat as Chair of Alton Catholic District School Board. So Trustee Yan Tomasi, my vote, so could you please let me know why should I vote for you over Trustee Duarte? In a couple of points, I guess.
Well, I don't know how many points I can make, but I think first and foremost, it's a personal choice. I think I've laid out for you what my understanding is of the role of Chair, my understanding what the role of the Board is relative to the Education Act, relative to what we do with, how we treat the parents and their children while they're in our institution. I think that I come at the position from a faith-based perspective. I think that parents send their children to Catholic schools because they want something more than what is offered with our coterminous boards.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Next up is Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Yan Tomasi, I have a question. You talk about the role of Chair. What do you see as being the most important role as a Chair, like in regards to the remainder of the trustees?
So I, let me see if I interpret your question correctly. You're asked, so the Chair's duties are spelled out, and they consist of managing the meetings, knowing the legislation, knowing the procedural bylaws. That in itself creates the leadership role. Outside the boardroom, it's the duty of the Chair to collaborate with everyone in the system. That again, in itself, is a leadership role. I think that what I bring to the table, and I think all of yous know, whether you agree with my points of view or not, I am faith-based, and I represent what Catholic education was meant to be, what it is. That's what I bring to the Chair position.
It didn't really answer my question, but thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I have one more question?
Go ahead, Trustee Guzzo.
Yeah, I posed the same question to Trustee Duarte. How will you help amplify the student voice and the parent voice when it comes to ensuring that everybody is treated equitably?
Good question, really tough to answer. I think that as a faith-based organization that delivers what is mandated by the Ministry of Education, and as we put it through a Catholic lens, everything that we do in Catholic education is for the betterment and advocacy of student voice. We have the Senate, we have trustees at the table. We're the only Board in Ontario that has three student trustees. Not Toronto with 145,000 students have three trustees. I think we do an exceptional job of giving voice to the students. Will we make decisions that they agree with? Not all the time.
Thank you, Trustee Yan Tomasi. Student trustee Mazri Amar has a question.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So my question is, how would you view the role of the student trustee? And how are you thinking of getting feedback from students as a Chair of the Board?
Thank you for your question. So student trustees are the voice of students at the board table. Would I make any changes? I would ask staff, because trustees work with staff, to reach out to the individual schools. And I would ask and canvass the students, especially the senators, because they have the heartbeat of what goes on in each of our schools to bring back ideas that we can turn into policies that would address the issues that perhaps aren't coming to the table today.
Thank you, Trustee Yan Tomasi. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
Sorry, yes, you may. Sorry, Trustee Mazri Amar, follow-up?
Yeah, no worries. I was just wondering how you're planning to get that feedback from students?
Well, we have a Superintendent of Student Success who is responsible. I would ask the Secretary to the Board to reach out to the Superintendent. The Secretary to the Board is the only member that we as trustees go through to affect, ring a bell, and speak to our schools, and do it in that manner, I guess.
Thank you. Any other questions? So seeing none, we'll move to a vote by secret ballot on the resolution for the appointment to the position of Chair of the Board. For those trustees who are participating electronically, you'll either be emailing or making your vote known through a phone call. For trustees that are in person that are voting, they will mark their paper ballot. So we'll proceed with the vote now. Thank you for your patience. Uh, trustee Duarte is declared chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board for the period December 7th, 2021. To the inaugural board meeting in December of 2022. Could I have a motion to destroy the ballots? I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee DeRosa. All in favor?
Sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, it's O'Hern Chernotta, unless you, some, she beat me.
Corrected. O'Hern Chernotta, seconded by trustee DeRosa. All in favor?
Any favor?
Favor.
Any, any opposed? Chair Duarte, congratulations. Do you wish to address the meeting?
Thank you, Dr. Daily. Yes, I would like to, uh, say a few words, say a few words. Uh, before I continue, I must first, uh, thank my family for giving me the space to do this. Thank you, trustees, for putting our confidence in me. I must acknowledge and profusely thank past chair Murphy for the excellent mentorship I had last year. I really did learn a lot, and I know where to find you if need be. I do not see this as a victory, rather the beginning of a new chapter for us. Uh, like I said. We have one year left to earn back some of our reputation. Let's grab the opportunity and forge ahead with utmost integrity and respect. Two very powerful words which I will use again and again for the year. Over the past three years, it has been an absolute pleasure working with senior staff here at the CC. And on some committees, as well as the principals, VPs of some schools, mostly in Burton, as well as across the region. We have some extremely talented individuals in our system, doing amazing things with our children. We know you are doing your best with what you have. So one of our roles as trustees is to support the good work that you do. Staff, you have our assurance. We are here for you. To our students, uh, you have adapted to a new style of learning over the past year and a half. It has been challenging for you all. And the path forward is still uncertain. In spite of these challenges, you have thrived in every area. We have engaged, and we have very engaged and passionate student trustees. Listening to our student body. They bring information to our board at our board meetings every other week. Our main role as trustees is to support student success. Yes, students, you have our assurance. We are here for you. We also work hand in glove with our parents in our schools and communities. Without, without you, uh, we would not be able to raise the extra front funds and, and, uh, for the benefit of our communities and our students in our schools. I would like to thank you for all that you do. One of our roles as trustees is engaging with you, our parent community, and red peers. You should be aware that you can reach out to your local trustee anytime. Parents, you have our assurance. We are here for you too. Having said all that, we have over thirty-seven thousand students and about four thousand, five thousand staff in our system. I don't know the exact numbers now. To be practical, we definitely are not going to keep everyone happy. But with everyone's understanding and respecting everyone's position, we can assure you, we will hear you and we will work for you. Yes. Given our track record, I do understand the odds of us coming together, but I will do my part to break the ice and put in the time and effort to make this happen. I'm going to ask all of you to stay positive and focus and bring some confidence to our HCSB family. Trustees, as mentioned earlier, we will very strictly adhere to our bylaws and trustee code of conduct at our meetings. So I will suggest that we all take the time, once again, read documents, refresh ourselves. That will be a good starting point for our next meeting. Our meetings will be conducted in a focused, very respectful manner. You are expected to come prepared. Everyone gets an equal opportunity and everyone, everyone gets heard. Discussions and debates will be encouraged and conducted in an impersonal, non-flattening manner. Enough of what happened over the past years, won't happen again. So I thank you for putting your confidence in me for this year. You are always welcome to contact me formally and informally, and I will be, I will do the same. I'm pretty good in getting back to you right away. I will be easygoing and as transparent as possible to all of you. That's not for here. This is the school board. This is our school. The reason why we ran for elections. We got to bring our focus back. This can be kept simple and stress-free. We need to get a good night's rest after board meetings, especially me. Just let's remember to do everything we do with integrity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Duarte. Uh, we'll now proceed with the election of the vice chair of the board. For the period of December 7th, 2021, to the first board meeting in December 2022. Should a, a vote by ballot become necessary? This evening, superintendents Kroll and Oldman will act as scrutineers while I tabulate the ballots. As per our board bylaws, trustees present at the meeting by electronic means, when you choose to vote, at the time votes are being cast, cast his or her vote by means of a private telephone conversation. Or by email with the scrutineer, who shall mark the vote on a paper ballot in the same form and manner as though the ballots have been marked in person by the voter. The ballots shall then be included with the other ballots to be counted. Ballots cast electronically in this matter are subject to the same obligations of confidentiality on the part of the scrutineer as those cast by voters physically at the meeting. Also, according to our board bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of vice chair must be duly moved and seconded and received by the secretary of the board. So I'll now ask for nominations to come forward. I do see a few hands up already in the chat. Uh, trustee Guzzo, do you have a nomination?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to nominate trustee Agnew for vice, vice chair.
Thank you. So trustee Agnew nominated by, uh, or moved by trustee Guzzo. Do we have a second?
Yes, my hand is up. I'll second that nomination for trustee Agnew.
So seconded by trustee O'Hern Chernotta. Trustee Agnew, do you accept the nomination for the position of vice chair of the board?
Uh, yes, I do.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Trustee DeRosa?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I'd like to nominate, uh, trustee, uh, O'Brien.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Trustee O'Brien, nominated by trustee DeRosa. Do we have a second?
Carabella.
Seconded by trustee Carabella. Trustee O'Brien, do you accept the nomination for the position of vice chair of the board?
Mr. Chair, I accept the nomination.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Are there any other nominations to come forward? Ask a second time if there's any more nominations for the position of vice chair of the board. And a third and final time, any other nominations for position of vice chair of the board? Trustee DeRosa, I believe your hands up. I'm not sure if you have, i- if it should be.
Uh, you want me to leave my hand up? No. Uh, hold on.
I prefer you take it down. Uh, thank you. Um. So we have, uh, seeing no further nominations. May I request a mover and a second to close the nominations for the position of vice chair. Moved by. Trustee DeRosa, seconded by.
Yan Tomasi.
Trustee Yan Tomasi. All in favor to close nominations for the position of vice chair of the board?
In favor.
Any opposed? I would like, the motion carries. I would now like to give each nominee for vice chair an opportunity if they wish to say a few words. And allow trustees to ask any questions of the candidate prior to a vote. Trustee Agnew, would you like to say it?
Sure. Thank you very much. Through you. Um, so thank you for the nomination of vice chair this evening. I really am honored, and I'd like to thank trustee Guzzo and trustee O'Hern Chernotta for the nomination and the second. I will be proud to hold this seat should I be elected, and I promise my utmost commitment and dedication to the role of vice chair. I will support, respect the chair and their role every step of the way with the shared vision of moving the business of our board forward and creating a spirit of collaboration around our collective table. As a parent of two children on our board, I have been extremely involved with the HCSB in numerous ways over the years. In addition to being a longtime school council member, I have held seats on numerous committees and subcommittees within our board, including CAC, mental health, equity and inclusion. Uniforms, international data persons with disabilities, and others. In addition to my involvement with provincial and federal parent and family engagement committees, several of which I have chaired or vice chaired. I'm also a dedicated volunteer with several charities, and giving back to our community is very important to me. Aside from my role as a parent, which is the most important one that I hold, my role as a trustee has been one that I have fully embraced and also enjoyed immensely. To be able to hear the voices in our communities, to participate in incredible initiatives, to have the privilege of seeing the work that happens every day in our schools. To engage in important discussions around our board table, they make me proud every day to be a trustee with the HCSB. I am a believer of removing barriers, creating opportunities, supporting and enriching home, school, parish connections. And working hard to ensure that our stakeholders feel heard, and not just heard, but that we listen and act. I pledge to continue to advocate for students, families, and staff, all of whom we have elected to serve, and I vow to continue making every decision with the goal of what is best for student achievement and wellbeing. Is my hope that my fellow trustees will see that through my previous experience, coupled with my commitment and passions for my role as a trustee, this will allow me to serve this board as your vice chair, and I will put the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Are there any questions for trustee Agnew? Trustee Yan Tomasi.
Yes, through, um, secretary Daly to. Trustee Agnew. What do you see your role as vice chair being?
Thank you.
Uh, and through you, uh, Mr. Chair, um, so certainly, um, you know, in a number of different roles, but I think first and foremost is to ensure that I am there as a support, uh, for the chair. Um, to, um, help in any way required with any of the duties of the chair. Um, to play an active role in helping us decide to move the business of the board along, um, in the event that the chair is unable to perform, um, his duties. Uh, for whatever reason, to be able to step into that role and assist where required, um, should a gathering maybe pass. Being able to step in again to that role to be able to continue, uh, the meeting and any other, uh, any other duties that come my way, whether they be. Um, involved with school openings or dedications or attending on behalf of the board, um, to speak or deliver, uh, an address. Um, and so I think it is multifaceted, but again, first and foremost is to be, um, that support for our chair and to work collaboratively to move the business of the board along. Um, and have effective meetings as much as possible.
Thank you. The same question to, um, trustee O'Brien.
Uh, trustee Yan Tomasi, if it's okay, we'll, we'll, um, see if there's any other questions for trustee Agnew, and then we'll, we'll come back to trustee O'Brien. Um, trustee Guzzo?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, trustee Agnew, um, as being. The first female voted into one of these leadership, or not voted, but nominated in one of these leadership roles. Um, in the four, well, this is the fourth term of, um, of this position. How do you see? The difference in what you can bring to the table? Through a different lens?
Um, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the question, uh, trustee Guzzo. Um, so, you know, I, I would say that, um. I think first and foremost is, I do think it provides, um, an opportunity for, uh, our female students within the system or other, you know, female, um, in our community. Uh, to see someone in this role. I think it just allows them to, um, you know, take a look at that representation. Um, and realize that, you know, um, anyone can hold any position, um, within an organization or on a committee or on a board. Um, you know, I certainly think that, uh, myself being a female doesn't set me aside, um, from any of my male counterparts. I'm really proud of all the work that we've done here at the board and, and the contributions that all of our, uh, trustees have made. But I, you know, it, it hopefully will bring a little bit of a different perspective, a different lens. And again, if nothing else, if I can just provide that example of an opportunity, um, for, you know, our female, um, students out there, I think that would be, uh, a big honor.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Trustee Yan Tomasi, do you have another question?
Yes, so the same question that I gave to trustee Agnew is for trustee O'Brien. And that is, what do you see your role as being as vice chair?
Thank you. Um, thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi. Uh, trustee O'Brien, before you answer that question, would you like to make a, a statement or say a few words?
Thank you, um, through you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would. And, um. In my few words, I may even answer that question. Um, I want to first of all, thank trustee DeRosa and trustee Carabella for nominating me. Um, I really appreciate that. Um, so my fellow trustees, we have just, um. Elected a chair, um, at a time in our board where it, there's a lot of divisiveness. Um, a lot of entrenchment and a lot of people in their own corners. And I truly believe that the chair we elected. Is probably the only person right now that, that can unify us. Um, not with the ability, but he has the courage and the will to do it. So. But that's not what this is about. This is about the vice chair position. So the question is, what is the vice chair and what do they do? Well, if the chair is the backbone of the board. The vice chair is the supporter of that backbone. The one who massages the back, but the one who, who supports it. Then not takes all the knots when, when, when there's, when there's trouble, the troubleshooter who is behind the scenes. It will be a very difficult year. It's our fourth year, and he will have a hard job, and I am fully faithful and confident he can do it, but he needs someone. Who will, let me just say it, has his back all the time. The one who's out there talking to trustees, communicating and keeping them updated, letting them know where the trouble spots are. So that we can move forward in this fourth year and accomplish something. For some of us, it may be our last year. For some of us, it may be our last year running. So we need a Vice Chair that's going to be strong with the, with the, with the Chair, that's going to be with him so that they are almost the same person. And I can be that person. The Chair needs someone who, who will take the gavel when he needs it, that, that will, that will smooth things out, will support him when there are so many, so many different factions coming at him that he doesn't know what is right or left. That's the kind of Vice Chair he needs. I can do that. I can say I can do it, but all of you know me. So I ask you tonight to make the best decision, not only for me, but for him. And therefore, for the Board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Jan Tomasi, did you want to ask your question again or was it answered in, in Trustee O'Brien's statement?
Yeah, I think he's addressed it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Trustee Guzzo, did you have your hand up for question?
No, I, I don't. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry about, sorry about that. Any other questions for Trustee O'Brien? Okay, seeing no other questions, we'll proceed to a vote and we'll do it in the same manner that we did for the position of Chair. So for those trustees who are joining electronically, you'll either email or express your vote via phone and for those trustees in person, they'll mark their own ballot. So we'll just take a couple of minutes to distribute and tabulate ballots. Welcome back. Trustee Agnew is declared Vice Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board for the period December 7th, 2021. First Board meeting in December 2022. Could I have a mover and a seconder for the ballots to be destroyed? Moved by Chair Duarte, seconded by
O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Congratulations, Vice Chair Agnew. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much through you, Director Daly. I just thank you. I don't have a big speech prepared, I think I said. Most of my points in my nomination acceptance, and so I just want to thank, I just want to thank for the nomination and for the voting. And I promise to do my very best. So thank you for the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew, and congratulations, Vice Chair Agnew and Chair Duarte. And I'd like to just pass on my thank you to Trustee Murphy for his year as Chair of the Board. Thank you very much, Trustee Murphy. We're going to rearrange ourselves here a little bit and I'm thankfully going to pass over the gavel to, to Chair Duarte. So maybe we'll take a five-minute break. Our clock here is 8:25 and we'll reconvene at 8:30 if that's okay, just as we reorganize the room.
Good evening, once again. Once again, congratulations to Vice Chair Agnew and thank you to Past Chair Murphy. Moving on to item five of the, of the agenda. Presentations. There are no presentations this evening. Next order of business delegations. There are no delegations this evening. Moving on further to next order of business, approval of the minutes. Minutes of the November 16th, 2021 regular Board meeting are in your package. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 16th, 2021 regular Board meeting?
Trustee Agnew?
Moved by Trustee Agnew. Seconded by
O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien. All in favor?
I'm against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Jan Tomasi is against. One second, I'm just getting used to the paperwork here. Okay, I'll call a recorded vote. I'll call a recorded vote.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So this is item number 7.1. Approval of the minutes. Vice Chair Agnew.
In favor?
Trustee DeRosa.
I abstain.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Jan Tomasi.
Against.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Hunsanata.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar.
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa.
In favor.
So we have six in favor, one opposed, abstain, motion carries. Moving on to the next order of business, item number eight. Business arising from previous meeting. The summary of outstanding items from previous meetings in a package. There's a chart out there. Moving on to the next order, item number nine, action items. 9.1. Policy II-20. Child abuse and protection of students. Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, can you please, please read the motion?
I can. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Of course, my dog decides to bark as soon as I turn on my microphone. My apologies. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II-20 child abuse and protection of students be approved.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. May I have a second for this item?
Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Agnew. Do we have, and I'll open up floor for discussion. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Jan Tomasi.
Favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Hunsanata.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar.
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa.
In favor.
The motion carries. Trustee Agnew, sorry, Vice Chair Agnew, I forgot.
In favor.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. It was not intentional.
I'm sorry.
Okay. We shall move on to item 9.2. Item 9.2, parliamentarian. Trustee Guzzo. The following, the following is a notice of motion from the November 16th, 2021 regular Board meeting. I will now read the motion. Result that the Halton Catholic District School Board directs the Director of Education to review the use of parliamentarian at Board meetings and determine if the use of said parliamentarian is required to continue with attendance at every Board table versus on an as-needed basis. Moved by Trustee Guzzo. May I have a second?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I haven't, I haven't moved it yet. I, I was actually going to withdraw and not move it.
Okay. My script said that you moved it, so, okay, so, Trustee Guzzo. Can you confirm that you are withdrawing this motion?
I would like to withdraw this motion.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Move on directly to item number 9.3. Item 9.3 is again, Trustee Guzzo. The following is a notice of
I'd, I'd like to read it, Mr. Chair, if that's possible.
Give me a second. The following is a notice of motion from the November 16th, 2021 regular Board meeting. Trustee Guzzo will read the motion. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board direct the Director of Education to conduct a review of hiring practices immediately and that protocols be put in place to address the historically disadvantaged groups in the workforce by ensuring the following minimum criteria is met. When selecting candidates for interviews where applicants have demonstrated their ability to meet the mandatory requirements, prioritize understanding of equity in education for historically underserved groups. prioritize understanding of equity in education for historically underserved groups, lived experience, skill set, backgrounds and varied work experience that may be considered valuable to the position. Example of unique perspectives of underrepresented groups such as indigenous peoples, black or other racialized people or peoples with a disability. Two, to ensure diversity on hiring panels to include individuals who have the knowledge and experience, including lived experience, to reflect the needs and interests of communities in the school that have been historically underrepresented in decision making. Three, conduct workforce census. Four, track progress in the recruitment of underrepresented, underrepresented groups. Five, establish training and resources for human resources inclusive hiring practices. And six, establish mentoring programs to support representation of underrepresented groups in senior positions.
Trustee Guzo, actually, I was supposed to read that. Anyway, I need a second now. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Trustee Agnew, second. Trustee Guzo, can I ask you to open up the discussion, please?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I know there has been some question in regards to this motion as to whether or not it is appropriate this time considering we have embarked on an equity audit. What I will say is, is just because we have endeavored and to start an equity audit doesn't mean that there are things that we cannot do in the immediate future. Promoting diversity in schools is more than just encouraging students of different backgrounds to attend certain schools. It requires administrators to think cradically about the ways diversity impacts education. A school administrator degree readies graduates for promoting and teaching diversity as means of accepting it. Educators and administrative leaders can help students better understand that while everyone is different in the most fundamental ways, everyone is the same and should be treated with respect. This will go far in helping students accept diversity and promote it in their daily lives. When we have, when we have teachers that are leading our students and reflective of their lived experiences because they can relate to them, their success is that much more. Sorry, my apologies. Their success will then thrive. Not only will it help those groups that are marginalized, but it'll also help all of our students to understand each other, to learn from each other, to learn from each other's gifts. Everybody brings something different to the table and by embracing the diversity and ensuring that our school, our schools are led by those and creating a mentorship program. We are in turn saying that we are committed to making sure that everybody is represented and everybody feels equal here in our schools. And isn't that really what we're here for, is to ensure student success? If that means even if it's only three percent of our student population, three percent is still three percent and it's growing. Halton, Halton has become a very diverse area and our students need to see that our leadership and our, our schools are reflective of what our student, of what our student population looks like. I implore all my, my trustees to please support this motion as this is a step in the immediate future. I have been, I've had the privilege to speak to some of these marginalized groups and what they, what they ask for and what is seen as an emergency need. And this is one thing that we can do today and in the immediate to ensure that our teachers are reflective of what our student body is, not only for our parents but for our students and for our students' success. So I please ask that you support this motion.
Thank you, trustee Guzo. Before we move on to discussion, I'd like to remind trustees that when, when you have the floor, kindly turn your cameras on and use the chat box for putting hand up because I cannot see who's putting their hand up if you use the hand symbol. So please, I'd like your cooperation, cameras on and hands up in the chat box. So I will now open up the floor for, for discussion. Do I have anybody wanting to ask questions? No questions? Oh. Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Great, thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a lot to add, I think that trustee Guzo has done an excellent job explaining the validity and the reasoning for this motion. I, I think it's really important, we have heard, we have heard from staff and students with respect to the issues that trustee Guzo has brought forward in this motion. I think it's a fantastic step, I think it's timely. And I simply will be supporting this motion again for all the reasons that were listed. And I couldn't add anything to this that trustee Guzo hasn't already covered. But I will be supporting this motion because I do think it's needed and I think it will be extremely impactful. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee, Vice Chair Agnew, it's gonna take me some time, some days. I just like to, I just said a couple of minutes back that I'd like trustees to use the chat box to put your hand up. I see your hand up there. I'm not going to take the time to find out who's put the hand. I'd like everybody to follow instructions right from the get go. So moving forward, kindly type in hand up or hand in the chat box, okay? If there's a problem, please let me know. Moving on, trusted.
My hand is up.
Yes.
It was up before you entertained or gave the floor to trustee Agnew.
Trustee Antamasi. Did you hear what I said? Did you hear?
Thank you, Chair.
Did you understand the expectations?
I see at my end that my hand is up next to my name.
Correct, at my end, I see twenty five circles here. Twenty five, number twenty five. I do not know who puts their hand up there. So I did give an instruction in the chat box, kindly type hand up in the chat box. Okay? Try to, try to help me run the meeting, thank you.
Mister, Mister Chair.
Thank you, trustee Antamasi.
My.
Trustee Antamasi, thank you. You are in the queue.
What do you see, thank you to?
You are in the queue right now. In future, moving forward, you will type hand up in the chat box. Okay, so, right now we have trustee Carabella. Trustee Antamasi.
This is a technical question, Mr. Chair. Are you saying at your end, you cannot see my hand up?
There are twenty five attendees in this meeting. It's difficult for me to identify you. Okay, so I'd like your cooperation moving forward. I do not see a technical problem at, at using any device, I have a tablet here. I have a laptop here. So I do not, I can easily find a chat box. I think everyone can find a chat box. So moving forward, I'd like to request you cooperate. Okay, so right now, trustee Antamasi, I'm giving you the, giving you the benefit of doubt. Right now, we have trustee Carabella, then trustee Antamasi, trustee De Rosa, trustee Carabella, you have the floor. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I am wanting to understand because I'm feeling there's a bit of duplication.
Can I request you to put your, can I request you to put your camera on, please? Thank you.
It is on.
Oh, it was not on, yeah. Now, now it's on, thank you, my apologies.
Okay. So I, I am sensing a bit of duplication on these, this motion with the motion that was passed as a response to a delegation. And then again with the equity audit and now staff is again being asked to do this particular motion and some of the items are duplicated. So I'm not, I'm, think we should just do one at a time. And maybe Superintendent Oldman might like to respond to that, but I'm thinking of the duplication of time and money to achieve this motion when things are already in place with the other motions.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, let me ask Director Daly if Superintendent Oldman will be the right person?
I, I guess maybe it'd be helpful to know which, which conflicting motions that trustee Carabella is speaking about, just, just so it's clear in my mind.
Trustee Carabella, can you help us out here?
Well, yes, I guess number four, if I just skip down to number four, it says track progress in the recruitment, recruitment of underrepresented groups. And that is also being asked in the response to the delegation with points two and three, which was a staff report that outlines the effort that the board has put into the recruitment of minority talent in the last five years and details of the improvement, changes and successes that have been recorded following the efforts that might have been implemented. So that would be maybe right now that what comes to mind.
Original response to delegation as reporting back to where we're at now and I would assume, but I, I'll leave it up to trustee Guzo to explain. I'm assuming that in the motion in front of us, it's to track progress going forward.
So Director Daly, you're suggesting trustee Guzo can answer that?
Well, they're, they're, this one's her motion, so I'm assuming that's, that's what's in this motion.
Trustee Carabella, are you okay with trustee Guzo answering your question?
Well, I'd like to hear from Superintendent Oldman because it has to do with staff and her staff working on these points.
Thank you, I'll, I'll direct it to Superintendent Oldman.
Sorry, point, point, point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Guzo, what's your point of order? Can you tell me which procedural bylaw we have broken?
That this is my motion, not Superintendent Oldman's motion, so she can't speak to something that.
Trustee Guzo, your point of order is not valid. So we have not broken any bylaws, we'll, I'll come back to you, I see your, a couple of comments there. I'll come back to you. Thank you, trustee Guzo. I shall now ask Superintendent Oldman to provide a few comments and respond to trustee Carabella. Superintendent Oldman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, trustee Carabella, I can offer, I have both kind of corresponding motions, the, the one of the November sixteenth meeting and that of, obviously, this proposed one in front of me. Ultimately, out of PPM one sixty five, this is ongoing work, both in the motion that's, that's being, I guess, under consideration now. So this work, I appreciate, you know, items two and three of the November sixteenth motion, which will come in the form of a staff report on December twenty one. I think will be a, a kind of a reflective point as, as Director Daly had noted. And I would, I would assert, but, but I would leave trustee Guzo to clarify that the work here is more of a, of a forward, ongoing nature. This is work that we will be doing in, in coordination with the requirements of, of PPM one sixty five as it is and really just in, in keeping of, of good HR practice and best practice to be constantly kind of reviewing in these, these spheres.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman, I'm gonna jump to trustee Guzo and ask her to provide her comments on this and then I'll get back to the speakers list. Speakers list is, is trustee Antamasi, sorry, trustee Carabella's second question, trustee Antamasi and then trustee De Rosa. Trustee Guzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as Director Daly and Superintendent Oldman have both said, when I made the motion at the last board meeting for a staff report, it was a staff report in response to a delegation to answer questions that came forward that were historical. This here is, as Superintendent Oldman has said, is in response to a PPM, that is absolutely accurate. But what, what, what the ask is, is that we implement this immediately and move forward with this as our practice and our guideline and that it's set for, set, set in progress immediately. There is a need and there is an urgency with this.
Thank you, trustee Guzo, I'm gonna remove your name from the list, speakers list, okay? I think you say your piece. Coming back to trustee Carabella, you have heard trustee Guzo and Superintendent Oldman, do you have a follow up question?
Well, my, thank you, my follow up question is that I did read through the PPM one sixty five as well and I, I'm understanding that this is all, all ongoing. And I'm also understanding that we had a, our policy review, which we just revised in May twenty seven, twenty twenty one with the PPM one sixty five and it was revised with this in mind. So that's where I'm coming from is, is that we're already doing this work and I'm not seeing the need for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, I will now move to the speakers list, which is trustee Antamasi, trustee Antamasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just to go back on a point, so at my end, I see my hand up, are you saying that at your end, you didn't see my hand up?
Yes. We have a chat box.
My problem, because I put my hand up anyways, the question.
Trustee Antamasi, did I hear you say something?
I beg your pardon.
You said, it's, you said something, okay, can you repeat that again?
I did not say anything.
Okay, good.
Going to ask a question if you allow me.
Okay, thank you, you have the floor to respond to this motion.
This question goes to trustee Guzo. Insofar as what you're asking for in this particular motion, are you suggesting that we are not following PPM one sixty five and you're adding groundwork for HR to perform that is not currently being performed when we're hiring?
Are you done, trustee Antamasi? I can't hear you.
Yes, I was done, Mr. Chair.
I didn't hear the last few words, could you repeat your last few words, I think you are muted, trustee Antamasi.
I was muted, okay. So, my question, trustee Guzo, is as follows. Are you saying in this motion that HR asks per PPM one sixty five on not doing the screening that's mandated by the Ministry of Labor and the Ministry of Education? Because as trustee Carabella has already stated, there are overlapping reporting functions that you're asking for here. So perhaps my question after you respond can go to Ms. Oldman to address what is the current process when we look at candidates and how we ensure that we're looking at minorities as per the policy that we passed back in May?
Trustee Antamasi, couple of things. Number one, I'd like to see your camera on when you speak. Number two.
Mr. Chair, if I put my camera on, I will lose the signal.
Listen to me, I will not have this going forward. Will, listen to me. I'd like to see your camera on, please. Next time, number two, number two. Trustee Antamasi. Okay. That's good, thank you, thank you. Number two. You will address the chair, not trustees directly, moving forward. Your question to me, to, to the chair, was to be addressed to trustee Guzo, is that correct? Trustee Antamasi, are you there? Okay, trustee Antamasi apparently has left the meeting or got disconnected, we shall come back to him later.
So, Mr. Chair, if you allow me to explain, if I put my camera on, my bandwidth will not support it, so I'll get bumped off. If you want me to do that, then we can just stretch the meeting. So that's the reason why I don't have my camera on and I believe you're aware of my technical difficulties.
I'm not aware of that, trustee Antamasi is of now, but this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna request Director Daly to, to ask his staff to do a test on your computer and, and support you as far as technology is concerned. Okay, so I'm gonna put in this request to Director Daly, is it possible, Director Daly, before the next meeting for, to support him? Or get someone to test his computer from here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Director Daly, I'd like to, I'd like everyone, the rule to apply to everyone, okay, trustee Antamasi? Okay, so coming back to your question. You are, you are asking a question of trustee Guzo. I'd like the question to be addressed through the chair in future. So is your question still valid? You still want me to ask trustee Guzo that your question?
Mr. Chair, the question goes through you, I said, Mr. Chair. This question is of the mover, the, the person putting forward the motion.
Thank you. Trustee Guzo, trustee Guzo, there is a question here, you don't, you do not have to answer the question if you do not wish to. Okay? So trustee Guzo, do you wish, do you wish to answer the question? So trustee Guzzo, do you wish, do you wish to answer the question?
I'm okay to answer. Thank you, trustee.
Okay, thank you, trustee Guzzo. Please turn your camera on.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I have, I have a bit of an eye infection. I would prefer not to turn my camera on this thing. That's why I'm actually.
I will excuse you today. Thank you. Get well. Okay, go ahead. You have the floor.
So PPM 165 doesn't actually give for, for a specific time period and when it's supposed to be implemented. It gives a framework. There are things in how we can prioritize this, and I am asking that this be prioritized and that all of these items be put into, to effect. We know we don't have the workforce census. This isn't something new. We've had this discussed here at this table several times. I'm not implying that, that we're not doing what we're supposed to do. What I'm asking for is, is that we, we implement things faster than necessarily is prescribed. So that is my response. It's not a duplication of work. Once again, I will state having a staff report and actually putting something in motion are two different things. So that pretty much answers the questions that were asked. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Trustee Yan Tomasi, do you have a follow-up question?
So I, I think my question was a two-part. I also asked whether.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. Can you just repeat your second part, if you don't mind? I forgot.
I asked, what is the current practice as it relates to number five and number six in trustee Guzzo's motion?
Okay.
And that would be answered by, I would believe, Ms. Oldman.
Okay, first, let me, let me correct you. It's Superintendent Oldman start with. I shall now ask Superintendent Oldman to, to provide some answers. Superintendent Oldman, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. The established practices are in keeping with, with both our policy and our, and our procedural elements, as would have, would have been noted previously. In terms of items five and six of the proposed motion here, I mean, our, our practices are in keeping with policy and procedure. They are in keeping with our collective agreement obligations, which do prescribe, at least in, in some of our affiliate groups' collective agreements, a pretty prescribed recruitment process. So that is in keeping with that. It's in reflection of denominational rights in terms of that preservation and as well as in keeping with PPM 165, which does call into question a variety of the numbers noted here. And I think just an extension of that training and I guess support of that would be through, I know that's in partnership certainly with equity inclusion and then through, through CETA and the work that we do collaboratively and collectively together. But I think in terms of that, there's also kind of additional trainings that we would undertake with respect to cognitive biases, which do inform and a hiring process and really decision-making on a regular. So I think that that would attend to some extensional pieces that I would offer here in response.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Yan Tomasi, do you have a follow-up question?
No, I got the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi. We will now move on to trustee De Rosa. There's no speaker after that. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have a very simple question. When, when is the staff report due on this item? Anyone can answer?
Trustee De Rosa, could you repeat your question?
My question is, when does the board expect, or when does the staff expect to deliver a report on this question?
Okay, I will ask Director Daly. Superintendent Oldman, question again. Superintendent, Superintendent Oldman, you have the floor again.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. The, the one, the motion that was passed and adopted at the November 16th board meeting does have a staff report coming back on the, in response to the delegation of December 21st, 2021?
On December 21st.
Of the prior, yeah, the November 16th motion in response to the delegation, that, that has a staff report due by December 21. Yes.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. So, Mr. Chair, just a follow-up question comment, and then I will move on.
Go ahead, go ahead, trustee De Rosa. You have the floor.
Don't give me compliments yet, okay? I would, I would suggest that we are maybe two weeks, three weeks away from an official staff report. I, along the comments of trustee Carabella, believe that we may be, in effect, duplicating and maybe rushing. I think this motion, as much as I want to support it, would, would be better informed with the basis of a report delivered so that we can consider it in the context of the results of the staff report, which is only a few weeks away, to make sure that we're not missing anything and that it is well-founded. So for that reason, tonight, I will not be supporting. But I do support in principle the spirit of what we are trying to achieve here and certainly what we are trying, trying to achieve either through the results of the report and the equity audit that is currently going on. It seems to me to, to trustee Carabella's point that we seem to be going at this, you know, from all sorts of different directions and potentially duplicating effort, especially considering that the timeframes are only a few weeks anyway. So there we go. That's where I stand on this issue. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. Once again, I'd like to ask all trustees to use the chat box only for handout, okay? If you want to put in a comment, please fall in line. So anybody else on the speakers list? I do not have anybody else on the speakers list, so I guess we can move to close the discussion.
Trustee, Chair Dwart, I have my hand up.
Oh, I don't see. Oh, yeah, sorry, I missed you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
That's all right. Thank you. Hold on, let me get my camera on. Okay, so in particular, I have two questions. One is about the second point about ensuring diversity on hiring panels to include individuals who have the knowledge and experience. So I'm just, would like to know the current practice that we are following on our hiring panels. And.
Okay, thank you, trustee Carabella. I'll forward this to, to Superintendent Oldman. Superintendent Oldman, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. If I could just provide, perhaps I can ask for clarity on the, on the inquiry in term, as it relates to question number two. The hiring panels obviously are reflective of a policy and procedure, so in keeping with that. But if I can just ask for maybe clarity, so I can appropriately respond.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Carabella, can you provide some clarity, please?
Thank you. Well, oh, hang on, my camera. So, well, point number two is, is asking you to ensure diversity on hiring panels. So, and if we're following the policies, we should be having diversity on hiring panels. I'd like to understand about a hiring panel for teachers, then, how it unfolds? Is it three people on a hiring panel? Is it five? That sort of process where the opportunity is there to include diversity?
Superintendent Oldman?
Sharon, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So I mean, in response to that, it is, it would depend on, I suppose, if we're being specific to teachers, I appreciate that, that is, I think, part of, part of the inquiry here. But I think it's, it's the workforce on its general sense. So depending on the role in which we're recruiting for, the panel would be, you know, so it could be an occasional teacher, it could be casual. I mean, really, I mean, I think we're, we're speaking on a broad sense of, of diversity being a, an element of a priority for all of our groups, because really we want it to represent ultimately our student population, right? So I think, you know, in terms of that, the, the panel would be noted. I mean, I think wherever we can have diversity on the panel, that, I think that that speaks to my earlier piece in terms of training as it relates to biases and cognitive biases. So to ensure that, I think diversity, one, is celebrated and it's one that's encouraged. But I, I think it's one that we ensure through the hiring panel, depending on the position. We would want to make sure that we have the individuals there who can appropriately assess the needs, the look-for's, and the areas in which we are, we're seeking to strive when, when in our recruitment process. So in terms of that, I, I guess diversity is one where we're, we're meeting the panels. But I suppose we're doing that in, in, I guess, spirit of policy and procedure and what that prescribes, as well as what our, I guess, associated trainings can be for those who do sit on panels. So to ensure that, that we're, we're, I guess, meeting the social identities and, and making sure that we are lessening gaps and not furthering them.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Carabella, does it answer your question? Do you have?
Yes, it does. Thank you. And my follow-up is regard to the census. So in the motion as a response to delegation, motion 31021, there's the, the ask of information regarding the current demography, demography of the teaching and non-teaching staff within HCDSB. And then on this motion, it says, number three, conduct a workforce census. So there again, it's similar, same. And I did read through PPM 165, as I, I mentioned. And there they talk about a workplace census, but that it must be voluntary. So I'd like to know how a workplace census would be taking place. How, since it's voluntary, what are the expectations and how we could achieve that? Thank you.
Thank you, trust, thank you, trustee Carabella. Director Daly, who would be the best person to ask this?
Well, I, I think I can start and then Superintendent Oldman can, can help out. You're correct, trustee Carabella. Workforce census would be voluntary, so staff would be invited to partake in the census. Not unlike the student census that will be launching in February. So it's important that, as we conduct a workforce census, that our employees understand the purpose, the importance of it. But ultimately, it is a voluntary survey.
Trustee Carabella, is that good?
Thank you. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Carabella. I will now move on down the list. Trustee Caitlin, sorry. Trustee Bowie, my mistake. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. My question is also similar to trustee Carabella's, is in respect to point three and four regarding data collection. So I'm assuming that the data collected for the purpose of the last response to delegation will be only available and published in correspondence in that staff report to the board. So my question specifically is how both points three and four, so conducting this workforce sentence, which might be in tandem with policy with the PPM, and number four specifically, tracking progress in the recruitment of underrepresented groups, since this is likely to happen in the future over a long period of time. So my question regarding this is basically, who has access to the, who will have access to this data that's collected? Why are we collecting it? And, you know, what decisions will this data be used in? So will this be published on our website for students and staff to view? Will this be something that's regularly updated to the board for us to help inform our decisions? Will this be something that's only available to staff but helps influence their decisions and potentially for the practices? So like, is this going to be internal within the board or is this going to be published in some way? And potentially what we see the impact of that being? And that can go probably primarily first to trustee Guzzo, to how she envisions that, and then maybe to senior staff to, to respond.
Trustee Bowie, you would like staff, senior staff to respond? I'll come to trustee Guzzo.
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll start with trustee Guzzo, though, because I don't know if she had a specific thing in mind.
Okay, I will now jump to trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, trustee Bowie, for, for the questions. Conducting workforce census, at this point, we don't have any data in regards to, to what our, not only our student population is representative of, but our workforce population. And that is important in regards to recruiting and establishing the mentoring programs to support these underrepresented groups. If we don't have the data, we can't, we can't find out where our gaps are and where we need to fill them. And the fact is, is, is this is something that is required of us, and it's something that we can do immediately. And yes, the volun, the workforce census is voluntary. However, most will participate in it, and we have to take that information. And then I'm not sure if Dr. Collmore is on, on the call, but just very similar to the student census, which is also voluntary. For us to be able to move forward and to make changes, we have to know what our demographics are, and currently we don't have any of that. So I hope that answers. I'm not sure if there was another part to your question, trustee Bowie. Sorry, go ahead.
The other part was for staff, I think so. The other part was for staff. So Dr. Collmore, are you online or would you like to answer the question?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I am online. Hi, good evening. So.
Can we see you on camera there?
You can. Hello. So through you, Mr. Chair, with respect to the question of sharing the data after the fact. So it is, it is customary for, for other boards who have done workforce censuses to share high-level results with the community. So I anticipate that that would be our, our plan if we were to go forward with a workforce census as well.
Thank you, Dr. Collmore. Trustee Bowie, does it answer your question?
Yes, Chair, can I have a follow-up?
Sure, you have a follow-up. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and through you. So I understand that, and thank you so much for your response, both Dr. Collmore and trustee Guzzo. That clears things up quite a bit. The other question I had was, in terms of the workforce census, is that, and this is directly to Dr. Collmore, is that already something that's underway? Or is this something that would be started by this motion?
You have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So we have started the initial conversations about what that could look like for our board if that was to be put in place. So the research department has started drafting and doing some research in terms of what others have done with respect to, in terms of like what to include on our workforce census. So we've certainly started that conversation and that work in case that is to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Caitlin. I'd like to bring attention to, to our trustees. Bylaw 10.3 talks about open and closed debate on the main motion. It talks about how much time the debate, the, the person who presents the motion can open, how much time to close, and all members may only speak once to the motion for a period of three minutes. So I'm looking down the list and I see that all members have spoken to this. Do we have any other members who have not spoken to this who'd like to speak to this?
Mr. Chair, I actually have a question. My hand's up in the chat.
Trustee, you're going to close the.
Mr. Chair, I'm in line.
I'm allowed to ask a question. I'm not making a statement. I'm allowed to ask a question, a clarifying.
But I'm in line, am I not?
Trustee Guzzo.
I'm actually before you, trustee De Rosa, and thank you once again for interrupting me.
Well, you know.
Trustee De Rosa.
Please, go ahead, go ahead.
Jumped the queue.
Trustee De Rosa, because you're so, it's all about you all the time.
Okay.
Really?
Point of order. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Guzzo? Trustee De Rosa? I will not have this, this kind of discussion moving forward, okay? Trustee De Rosa, you will wait to be recognized. I was speaking to trustee Guzzo. She had a question, and I was going to ask her whether she could answer and speak to it at the time of closing. Okay? And you were going, you interrupted me. This kind of interruption is not going to work here at this board table moving forward. You're going to have good discussions, robust discussions, respectful discussions.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm in line.
I, I also mentioned trustee De Rosa that we are going to follow our bylaws to the, to the letter. And I did explain bylaw 10.3, which states that any member will, will, will have a three-minute. will, will, will have a three-minute, a three-minute opportunity to discuss the motion. You already had three minutes to discuss that.
That was going to be my question, Mr. Chair, very respectfully.
Okay, Trustee Guzzo, come back to you. Trustee Guzzo, come back to you. Hold on. Trustee DeRosa, what, what do you have to say about my, my statement?
I think your statement to try to frame and to normalize and apply to rules is commendable. My only question to you was going to be, it didn't appear that I used my three minutes, and whether that would give me the opportunity to ask a second question. But I was, I was interrupted, and my, I, my law, my space in line, Mr. Chair, was ignored. So that's my point. Thank you very much. I leave you to deal with the question I have.
Thank you. Trustee, Trustee Guzzo, you had a question to ask. Is it something that you can do in the closing?
With all due respect to Mr. Chair, I can't ask a question when I'm closing because it's closing the item.
You're going to answer your own question in closing?
I can't answer my own question. It's a question.
Okay, so go ahead, Trustee Guzzo. It's your motion. I'm going to give you a little more leeway here. Go ahead, Trustee Guzzo.
Okay, so my question was, it is a comment that came up from Superintendent Oldman. I believe Trustee Carabella asked about the hiring panels for it to include individuals who have knowledge and experience, including lived experience, to reflect the needs and interests of communities in the school that have been historically underrepresented in decision-making. So, so my question is, because I didn't really hear it answered, on those hiring panels, do we have people that participate that reflect the needs and interests of communities in the school that have been historically underrepresented in decision-making specifically?
Okay, thank you, Trustee Guzzo. I shall now ask Superintendent Oldman to, to answer that. Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Guzzo, that is the endeavor, I suppose. And the answer that I tried to, I guess, offer before was that where the hiring panel is, excuse me, restrictive perhaps in the sense of what we prescribe, because we may not have someone who perhaps has the, you know, lived experience or otherwise. I think we try to, or we endeavor to have a broad set of questions that are in keeping with the best programming and also in keeping of the balancing that is required of PPM one sixty-five. So that we're doing where we don't have perhaps, you know, on its obvious surface, a fully maybe representative hiring panel because of our restrictiveness, than I think that that is otherwise attended to in our questioning, our look-forers, and in our training that supports the hiring and paneling, which is in that what I tried to offer in terms of cognitive biases.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Guzzo, is that to your satisfaction?
No, I have a follow-up. So.
Go ahead.
So the, the question is, is, is the limitations, so are we saying that, I just want to be clear. So the question, the ask on this is, and it was implied that this is something that we may already do, and I don't believe we do. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is that we do not have hiring panels that include people that are reflective of the needs and the interests. Having those, those skills is not what the question is. It is, it's talking about the interests of communities and the schools that have been historically unrepresented in decision-making. So it's having people that are on these hiring panels that have this. So are we saying that we already endeavor to do this, or we do have it, or we haven't done it? It's not really clear to me. And I do understand, Superintendent Oldman, that you are fairly new in this position. So I understand from your perspective, it'll be a very limited and short period of time. But there are other people in your department who could, who could answer historically, you know, has this been the case? But I, I guess for me, I don't believe that that has already been happening. But I could be wrong.
Trustee Guzzo, I think Director Daly has his hand up. Director Daly?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So just to, I, I guess, to clarify, Trustee Guzzo, our current hiring panels would be made up of either existing staff and/or trustees, depending on, on which position we were hiring for. So I think in terms of the limitations that, that Superintendent Oldman were speaking of, those would be the limitations in terms of what existing staff or potentially trustees we have on hiring panels. To try and mitigate the current limitations we have, we've tried to either conduct additional training with staff or ask for input with regards to some of the questions that we might be able to ask, that, that might be able to get at, at certain skill sets that we're looking for from candidates. And we get the, both the questions and the look-forers from, from staff or advisors that have some expertise in that area. But in terms of the actual people in the room, we're limited to, our, our practices were limited to staff that we have on right there.
Thank you, Director Daly. Before we move to closing, I don't see any new names. I see Trustee Antamasi and Trustee DeRosa. I'm going to give them an opportunity to ask them what they're talking, what they would like to talk about. But they're not going to discuss this motion. They have done speaking on it. Trustee Antamasi, you had something to say other than this motion, because you had your opportunity to speak. Trustee Antamasi?
All I was going to speak to, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That you can move to close the debate.
Okay.
A two-thirds vote.
Excuse me, I, I didn't get what you're trying to say. Is it something, some different bylaws that we are following or the same ones that we have?
So, Mr. Chair, our bylaws are silent on what to do when you want to close debate. You've alluded to a particular bylaw, which doesn't go far enough. As Chair, you're allowed to say, "Close debate", and then trustees can object, and by a two-thirds majority, they can override you. I was just.
I know what, I know what. Thank you. I know what you're talking about. That's not what, what this particular bylaw talks about. Thank you for your in, input anyway. Trustee DeRosa, you want to talk something? You have a question there other than this motion? You're, you're done, you're allocated time. Okay, I'm not hearing back from Trustee DeRosa. I will now hand the floor to Trustee Guzzo to close the discussion. Trustee Guzzo, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chair, you have to give me a chance to.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay.
I understand that you want to move on quickly, and so do I. But I would like to raise a point of privilege, Mr. Chair. And this is a suggestion, is that we pay attention to the order, the speaking order that's on the chat. Otherwise, nothing means anything anymore. So I would ask respectfully for you to follow the speaking order on the chat. Thank you very much.
Trustee Guzzo, Trustee DeRosa, can I, can you explain to me what a point of privilege is?
A point of privilege, Mr. Chair, is a point that one raises where he is prevented because of that, of that point of privilege, he is prevented from contributing and inputting into the debate, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I don't think so. I don't agree with that.
Mr. Chair, whether, it's not the point. If you agree or not agree, that's not the point. The point is a point of privilege prevents me from contributing to the assembly. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee DeRosa. Okay, we will now move. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor, and you have how many minutes? Three minutes? Three minutes. The time starts now, Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you. I've heard some, some different comments here this evening and, and, you know, rationale as to why we shouldn't be supporting, supporting our diverse and marginalized and historically underrepresented groups. There's, there's nothing more to say except for, take a look at the people around you at the table here. I want you to look, and I want you to tell me what groups are represented. I want you to have a look to see where our senior leadership, how diverse it is. I want you to take a further look, to look at our principals and our VPs, and see how much, how much diversity we have there. And then I want you to take a look at our actual teaching population and what we are doing to ensure that we are being equitable to all and that we are allowing that these underrepresented groups are represented here around the table, that we are listening to the lived experiences and taking it and making sure that we translate that into experiences for our students, for them to succeed. When we say, "I support it in theory, but I can't", that's just not supporting it. That means you don't support it. If you don't support it, then that's it. That's fine. Then, then that's your spot on equity. So at the end of the day, if we don't think, if you don't think you need to move forward with this, then that is your choice. However, I will not sit by any longer and not give a voice to those who have historically been underrepresented. And I have made a promise that I will continue to move this forward and continue to fight until we make sure that we have the best for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Trustees, are we ready to vote? I will remind you, once we start the voting process, we will not have a discussion. We will, we will start the vote once everybody is ready to vote. So if anybody has questions, please ask it, raise the questions now. Okay, seeing none, I shall take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Abstain.
Trustee Ohunzenata?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Abstain.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masti Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
So we have four in favor, two opposed, two abstained. The motion carries.
Point of order? Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Trustee O'Brien, what's your point of order?
My point of order is, can we get a parliamentary opinion on whether or not this passed? Thank you.
Parliamentarian Kapoor, can I call on you to answer this?
Good evening, good evening, Chair. Based on past, can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, yes, Mr. Kapoor.
Thank you. Having a little bit of issue with this headset. Based on, as, as previously been decided, a majority vote can decide the motion. So this has been passed by a majority of the votes cast. I'm just refer, trying to find exactly the bylaw that I am referring to. That's eleven point four. An affirmative, except as otherwise provided in these bylaws, an affirmative vote shall require a majority of the votes of the trustees who do vote. Bracket abstentions count as a non-vote, closed bracket.
So we are.
Sir, Mr. Chair, abstentions count as a non-vote, isn't it?
Trustee O'Brien, can you just hold on? So.
Sure.
Parliamentarian Kapoor, we have four in favor, two opposed, and two abstained. So I said most carries, is that correct?
Yes, according to eleven four, the relevant portion of the vote is four-two.
Thank you. Thank you, Parliamentarian Kapoor. Trustee O'Brien, your point of order is invalid. It's not in order.
I appeal the point of order, Mr., or the, your decision, Mr. Chair?
Trustee Antamasi, you are appealing the point of order and the ruling on the point of order.
I'm appealing your decision. You've taken advice, a parliamentarian.
Sure, sure. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Do, do we have a second for that?
I do.
For appeal.
I will second it.
They can be a second.
You're fine, take the go.
Okay, so we are taking a recorded vote on the appeal. So we shall start with Trustee Guzzo again. Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Antamasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Sorry, Trustee Antamasi, I didn't catch what you said. What did you say? In favor?
That's my appeal, so I'm in favor.
Okay, okay. Trustee Carabella in favor. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Ohunzenata?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Student Trustee, Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Masti Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiba?
Abstain.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
And, trust, Trustee Duarte is opposed. So the appeal fails. The motion passes.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification, on the first round, when you vote, you didn't vote. So it couldn't have been a five-four vote. It would have to have been a four vote.
Trustee Antamasi? Thank you for bringing that forward. We are now moving on to item number nine point four. Item number nine point four, next order of business, bullying prevention and intervention. Trustee Agnew. The following is a notice of motion from the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular board meeting. I will read the motion. Whereas a sub.
It would be the, go ahead.
I would like to read that.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I will read the motion. Whereas the subcommittee was formed to review policy II dash forty, bullying prevention and intervention. And whereas the idea, ideas and conversations have been robust and insightful with much engagement. And whereas the Holden Catholic District School Board wants to be a leader in bullying prevention and stay ahead of the intervention initiatives in our school, we have resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board strike a standing bullying prevention and intervention committee to be comprised of representatives from staff, student, trustees, CIPIC, CAC, and any other representative as the committee determines it required, moved by Trustee Agnew. May I now have a second? Can you have a second for this?
Great, Trustee Guzzo, sorry, I couldn't get to my mic fast enough. Trustee Guzzo, I'll second.
Trustee Guzzo, thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor. Please open up discussion.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair. The motion itself is fairly explanatory, but just to give a little bit of background, there has been a process lately where, as I said in the motion, a subcommittee was formed to review our bullying prevention and intervention policy. And the process has been an extraordinary process. It's really been representative of a lot of voices and collaboration. The conversations have been very robust and a lot of discussion around, you know, what we can do with that policy and some of the issues that exist in our school system and how we can better, best represent our students and how we can put things in place to protect them and to hopefully prevent bullying from happening. So I really was encouraged by the conversations that were happening. And I thought, I've looked at some of the successful subcommittees and committees we've had at the board. I look at, you know, our mental health leadership committee, our equity and inclusion committee. And I really felt that if we, as a board, are committed to bullying intervention and prevention, that there would be a lot of merit to having a standing committee focused on this topic and bringing together several stakeholders to get their perspective and lenses, to work collaboratively with staff, to look at current initiatives, to look at future initiatives, and just to really review the work that's being done, take a look at what's going well, what's not going so well, and what we can be doing in the future as it pertains to this. And really, the effort is just to keep the conversation going. Again, I've seen such tremendous initiatives and work come out of the existing committees that we have at the board. I think it would be wonderful if we can make this a priority and we could have a dedicated committee that could meet, you know, a number of times a year to review our current practices and to take a look at what we could possibly be doing, like I said, differently or better, and just to find out what's happening out in our system. So that is really the, the. So that is really the, the, um, the intent behind the motion, just to keep the conversation going. Um, and I would be appreciative of my fellow trustees to support this motion. I think it would be a wonderful addition to our committee work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. And now, uh, take, uh, speakers. We have, uh, trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to trustee Agnew for bringing this forward. Um, I think bullying and intervention is one of those things that requires work all the time. Um, not only from a prevention point, but from a restorative point. Um, and I think by asking to involve staff, students, trustees, CPIC, CAC, um, and other representatives to come together to talk about it, um, to always strive to, to make things better, I think is, is a great, um, is a great start to making our schools that much more safe. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. We now move on to trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank, um, Vice Chair Agnew for bringing this motion forward. Um, I really feel that Vice Chair Agnew not only captures what anti-bullying should be about, that is supervision has to be key. But she's taken it a step further and she has made it clear that the actual process of us, of anti-bullying has to be monitored as well. And a one-off committee, um, done is just not good enough. The standing committee, I think, is what is needed. So not only, uh, we supervise the children, but we're supervising our supervision process of stopping bullying. So I commend for this motion and I will fully support it in the hope the rest of the trustees do as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. That was very nice. Uh, trustee Carabella, you are next. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I was on that committee as well, and it was, uh, very helpful and useful, and it was a great collaboration, collaborative effort. Um, I guess I have a question and then I have a comment. Um, I'm just wondering, currently, uh, each school has a bullying prevention, uh, and intervention panel or committee. And I was wondering if the superintendent who's in charge of that could, could speak to, um, how bullying gets reported now, like where would it go, and how having this committee, uh, would be an added step.
Okay, it's trustee, uh, Superintendent Cordiero. I'm right. Superintendent Cordiero, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Um, thank you for the question, Mrs., or trustee Carabella. Currently, our, uh, safe school teams on, at each school location include, uh, both school admin, uh, support staff, parents, and students. Those, uh, school teams are responsible for the review uh, and the drafting of their own bullying prevention intervention plans, which are expected to be posted on each of the school websites and aligned with both board policy and administrative procedures, as well as the board's own bullying prevention intervention plan and the Education Act. Those school teams are responsible for meeting on a regular basis to monitor and review the effectiveness of, um, the, the plan of school initiatives to create ideas for new initiatives and adjust existing initiatives or remove existing initiatives that prove to be ineffective or perhaps do not reflect the current, uh, climate. So, um, that's, that's the operations of bullying prevention intervention at the school level. In terms of the, uh, incident reporting, there are, uh, a couple of methods by which we collect information uh, where students, staff, or any person who is an employee of the board can report a bullying incident. So for staff, uh, and that includes school administrators, uh, a- any employee group, custodian, educational assistant, DEC, or so forth, uh, there is a KICS incident reporting form that is available through the board's website through StaffNet, whereby the employee can report any, uh, bullying behavior incident or whatnot. That generates a report that goes directly to the school administrator, the, i.e. the principal in this case. And the principal is required to complete part two of the KICS information incident reporting form. And then that will lead into an investigation at the school administrative level into that bullying report. That may result in, uh, a conversation, uh, whereby the investigation does, doesn't demonstrate that a bullying behavior or incident did occur. Uh, it may result in identifying a bullying incident that may be resolved through restorative practice. It may be resolved through other educational, um, programming. It may result in progressive discipline up to and including the point of suspension of up to twenty days. And if that bullying behavior repeats itself, uh, as per the Education Act, a student can be expelled from the school or from the system as a whole, whereby the school board still has a responsibility to provide that expelled student uh, educational programming in a program that we now call, uh, cross ropes. For students who are suspended for, uh, six to twenty days for bullying behaviors, uh, we have a suspended program called New Hopes. And for all other progressive discipline, um, measures taken that do not elevate or to rise to the level of six or more addition, or additional days suspension, then there are a plethora of progressive discipline, uh, practices that take place. I hope I've answered all your, your question as comprehensively as you may have expected.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Superintendent. Uh, trustee Carabella.
Yes.
Does it answer your question?
Yes, it does, and, um, I, I can see a benefit, um, of, as a board being, um, made aware or being part of the process. I, I, I wanted to make an amendment to the motion. And it's referring to our committees, the establishment process. Bylaw seven point two point one says it's an ad hoc or standing committee may be established with the approval of the majority of the members of the board. So, um, the way it's phrased, be it resolved that HCDSB strike is standing bullying prevention and intervention committee. Um, propose that it should be, be it resolved that a standing to strike out the HCDSB strike and say, be it resolved that a standing bullying prevention and intervention committee be established to be comprised of representatives from staff, students, trustees, CPIC, CAC, and any other representatives as the committee determines it requires. So it's basically like a friendly amendment in a sense, uh, just putting clarity, um, into the process.
We are all friendly here, so.
I find that.
Friendly amendment, so trustee, uh, Vice Chair Agnew is okay with that? Can we have that change?
Yeah, Andrew is just gonna.
So everybody says that on the screen? So it's a friendly amendment? Does that, does everybody agree to that? Any, any opposition to that?
I agree.
Seeing there's no opposition. We shall leave it at that. Going back to the speaker list, uh, trustee Carabella, that's all, right? That's all you had?
Yes, for now, if I think of something else. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, trustee Guzzo, you spoke one time.
No, I haven't spoken. I, I, I have a question, though. I'm allowed to have a question, uh, Chair Duarte. Uh, I just, I can't debate, like, I can't speak.
Okay, I'll take your question. Uh, trustee Guzzo, what's your question?
Uh, thank you, um, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, my question, I think, would probably be best served answered by Superintendent Cordiero. Um, I too was part of that committee, um, the bullying prevention review for the policy. Um, and the question came up about the safe schools teams. Um, so one of the changes is that it's supposed to be posted on the website, um, um, and who the committees are. Um, do we know if that has been done? I, I know Superintendent Cordiero, uh, made a couple of comments that it was on the website, and I, and I just, going through a couple of the websites myself, um, I noticed that they're not actually posted, so, um, if we can just find out if that was the directive or if that has been done.
Yes, I'll check. That's Superintendent, uh, Cordiero. Uh, can you answer the question, please?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, to, uh, trustee Guzzo. That is the expectation. That was a directive that was given to school administrators, both in memo and in an address at a joint administrators team meeting. Uh, there are a number of schools with responsibilities that fall under the family school superintendent. So it is, uh, important that the family school superintendents follow up with their school administrative teams to ensure that those school, safe school teams are posted and they are accessible to the general public. There might be circumstances where certain names of the students and, uh, parents may be protected from being listed, uh, on the school website. But again, that's a determination made, uh, between those t- uh, safe school team members and the school principal.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordiero.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Uh, trustee Guzzo, can you just hold on? Uh, trustee Yan Tomasi has not spoken. I'll come back to you.
I, I, I just want my follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you want to follow up on that? Okay.
Yes, please. Um.
Go ahead.
So, so just a question regards to the committee, though. How do we know who, like, I'm a parent, how do I know who the safe school committee is if it's not posted? Um, and it's supposed to, it's supposed to have a community person, so there wouldn't be a reason not to post it, just post somebody's name, just like school council. Their names are posted on the website, right? That, you have to know who your community representatives are. Are you suggesting that people would be on the safe school community, committee, but not have their information posted?
Superintendent Cordiero.
Uh, uh, what I'm saying is there are circumstances for privacy and confidentiality reasons whereby a member of the safe schools team, their name may not be published to the general public. That is a site-based decision that may be agreed upon by the safe schools team and the school principal. That's all I was saying. There are sometimes students and/or staff employees whose names don't necessarily get published publicly because there is something that is ongoing or there's a, a concern. And that's something that is, that is discussed between the school principal and those safe school teams and that individual member. As, as to the individual school teams and their names being posted or the teams being posted on school sites, that is a responsibility that rests with the school principal, and that is something that would require monitoring or supervision among the family school superintendents for those individual schools.
Point, and just a clarification, Mr. Chair. So, again, how am I supposed to know who's on the safe schools committee if their information isn't posted? I, I just, I have, I take issue with that. It, it's, it, you know, if that is a problem, then maybe that has to be looked at in, in making sure that we have people. How can you have a teacher representative on the safe school community? The safe school, um, skate, safe school team is supposed to be available for the, like, for the parents, for the students. That's what it's supposed to be there for. So I, 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 I take a bit of concern with that.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Chair, respond to the, the safe, all, all safe school teams should be posted. All members and their names should be posted. But like everything in, in circumstance, there might be, in the odd circumstance, for whatever reason, there might be an individual whose name isn't posted for whatever reasons, through human re, uh, through human resources or through whatever means it may be. But all school teams and staff, um, and team members should be posted on their individual school websites. If I miscommunicated that in any way, shape, or form, then I apologize.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordiero. Uh, there's always improvements to be made, so, so we'll leave it at that and we'll work out, do our best. Uh, moving on to trustee Yan Tomasi. Trustee Yan Tomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, as I read the motion at the bottom, it says in any other representatives as the committee determines. The terms of reference for committees is set by the board. So I would move to delete committee determines. Because that function cannot be left to the committee itself.
Sorry, uh, trustee Yan Tomasi, I think I lost a couple of your words. So are you looking to amend this motion or are you just looking for a friendly amendment?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it's your decision how you wish to proceed. I'm stating a fact that committees do not set their own terms of reference. The terms of reference need to be set by the board at this particular juncture. So I'm suggesting to remove that the committee determines who it wants on that particular committee.
Thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi. Uh, Director Daley has hand up. Director Daley.
Um, yeah, it, it might be that the section that trustee Yan Tomasi might be, um, speaking to is seven point two point five in our board bylaws, terms of reference, terms of reference duties, mandates, timelines shall be outlined and approved by the board following the initial meeting of the committee. So typically, I think the committee meets, they bring forward terms of reference, uh, they present them to the board, and then the board approves them at that point.
Thank, thank you, Director Daley. Uh, trustee Yan Tomasi, uh, you still have some time there. Do you want to ask a follow-up?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
So trustees.
I'm not in favor.
Okay, so Vice Chair Agnew is not in favor of a change. So trustee Yan Tomasi, the option available to use to amend the motion. Are you looking to amend the motion or leave it as it is?
I, as I stated previously to you, Mr. Chair, that I wish to remove that the committee determines. I, it was already removed and, and
So.
we went on to Secretary Daley, seven point two. If we're striking the committee at this particular juncture and we're voting on it to approve it, then the terms of reference are fixed at this particular juncture, not when the committee meets. The committee doesn't get to set its own terms.
Okay, thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi. So, uh, Vice Chair Agnew is here who interests the motion. She is not willing to accept a friendly amendment. So the option to you right now, and you only can make that decision, is whether you want to amend it. If you, I cannot make a decision for you, right? So if you are not willing to amend it.
As I stated, I will repeat myself, strike out the committee determines.
Okay, uh, trustee Yan Tomasi, I do not see an amendment, so I shall continue and move on.
Mr. Chair.
I heard some sound there, but I did not see any name in the chat box.
I can speak to, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, trustee Agnew, uh, sorry, Vice Chair Agnew would like to speak to trustee Yan Tomasi's, uh, query. Uh, so Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Yeah, just thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair, and just a point of clarification, um, and I know that we all have a copy of our bylaws here. But just to reiterate what, um, Director Daley had said, which is the terms of reference duties slash mandate and timeline shall be specifically outlined and approved by the board following the initial meeting of the committee. So at that point, after the meet, after the committee has met, then that information, uh, can be, um, outlined and approved by the board. So, um, I think we're putting it before, before the course. Um, and the, the bylaws quite, uh, clear on that. So, uh, I, like I said, I'm opposed to, uh, removing the committee determines. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Agnew. Uh, trustee Yan Tomasi, uh, if you have nothing else to say, uh, you do not have a follow-up question, I shall move on.
Uh, so I will repeat myself. The committee. The committee doesn't get to set its own terms of reference. The committee can meet, they can establish that they've met, and the committee is now struck. But the terms of reference are fixated by the board. I will stand by that. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Okay, we have discussed that item, so we are going to move forward. Uh, trustee De Rosa has not spoken to this motion. Trustee De Rosa, you have three minutes to speak to this. Go ahead, trustee De Rosa.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we're stuck in a little bit of a chicken and egg situation. The point is that that sentence in there, which trustee Yantumasi is seeking to remove, uh, is a procedural issue that in fact, uh, does not require amendment. It's in, it's in there in error from the point of view of our, what our bylaws require and from the point of view of procedure. So that statement does not belong in that motion. Uh, and I believe trustee, trustee Agnew or Vice Chair Agnew actually justified in her, uh, in, uh, in her thing. So, uh, if it, if it makes everybody happy to move an amendment and vote on it, I'm happy to do that. Or I'll leave it to trustee, um, Yantumasi to do that. But so this is not a situation that requires an amendment. I understand where trustee Yantumasi is coming from, but if the assembly is happy doing this through an amendment or a formal amendment, let's do it.
Thank you, uh, trustee De Rosa. You, trustee Yantumasi has done his time, uh, and he had the option of doing that. Now you have the option of amending it or?
So I will amend it.
Okay, so what's your amendment, uh, trustee De Rosa?
Remove those, the, the committee determines.
Okay. Uh, do you have a second after that?
I second it. O'Brien?
So we have, uh, trustee De Rosa and trustee O'Brien seconds it. Trustee, uh, De Rosa, uh, you can open up, uh, discussion on, on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Chair. I've said all I have to say, uh, on this. You can take it to discussion, anybody who wants to contribute or to a vote.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. Uh, does anybody want to comment on that? On this change? If not, we shall?
Sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, sorry, I can't type in
Okay.
fast enough. I, I do just want to ask a clarifying question. For me, they're both reading the same. Um, staff, students, trustees, CPIC, SEAC, and any other representatives as it requires or as the committee determines it requires. I think they both speak the same to me. It's when you get to the committee, um, there will be a discussion with the initial staff, student, trustees, CPIC, and SEAC. Um, if there are any other representatives that we'd like to be included, maybe, uh, uh, parents or, um, a mental health lead or something like that. Um, so I'm not understa, I really don't see the benefit of taking that out. I think both in and both out, it's the same to me. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Since it's trustee, uh, Vice Chair Agnew's, uh, motion, I will, uh, forward the question to Vice Chair Agnew.
Uh, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I, the only thing that I would say, and thank you trustee Carabella for bringing that forward. The only thing that I would say is that by having that wording in there, I, I just think it's specific that the, the committee will determine. Um, so yes, you could argue that in or out, um, it doesn't really matter. But I think the point is, is that we really want to hear from the committee with respect to who they determine based on the representatives in the seats at the table, um, who they may further need to or would like to have there. Um, so I just want to make sure that, you know, with that wording, it would be the committee that would determine that. Um, and I think that's really important, uh, for them to have that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Agnew. Uh, since, uh, we do not have anybody on speaker list, I see, I see trustee Yantumasi's hand up there. Trustee Yantumasi, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, I do, um, Mr. Chair. Um, if the composition is established at its first meeting and then they select the chair, how can you then ask the committee to re-establish their terms? To whoever wants to address that?
I'm, I'm not sure, uh.
So if
direction?
So if at the first meeting, you elect the chair, you've now struck the committee. Are you now saying that you're going to revisit and re-establish the component of who's on that committee? That gets done at the beginning when the board strikes the committee.
Uh, thank you, trustee Yantumasi. I think we are losing focus right now and we are going out of, uh, out of the, uh, the bounds of
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, just bear with me. So if you don't have membership on the committee, how can you elect the chair? You've already established, that gets established at the board. Then the committee that's been appointed by the board gets to decide who the chair is, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Yantumasi. I'd like to stay on focus here and, uh, I shall now take this to a vote. So we are voting on the amendment, uh, by trustee De Rosa and seconded by trustee O'Brien. Trustees, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Yantumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Ohunzenata?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Bobby?
Abstained.
Trustee Masri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa?
Opposed.
So there's five opposed, three in favor. The amendment fails. We now go on to main motion. So we do not have any speakers on the list right now, so I shall ask Vice Chair Agnew to close discussion and then we take it to a vote. Vice Chair Agnew?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I, I would think we've had a very robust conversation. I don't have anything else to add in the interest of time. Um, I would be happy to take this to a vote.
Trustees, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, I shall call the vote. Uh, trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Let me turn my camera on, please. Okay, trustee Guzzo in favor. Trustee Yantumasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Ohunzenata?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
So we have, we have seven in favor, one opposed, motion carries. The motion will now go to us form of committee. Moving on to item nine point five. Parent school councils, Vice Chair Agnew. The following is a notice of motion from the November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, regular board meeting. I will read the motion. Whereas we have dedicated and committed Halton Catholic District School Board parents who want to engage with their school councils and school communities in the most effective ways. And whereas we want to continually, continuously ensure that our Catholic school councils are meeting the needs of their school communities by engaging with them in meaningful ways and provide accurate representation of the parents in their schools to further the great work of our councils in the most meaningful way. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board gather parent feedback related to our Catholic school councils, including council membership, agenda setting, parent engagement, school home parish connections, feedback, feedback solicitation methods and communication to the school community. Be it further resolved that this feedback comes to the board of trustees in the form of a staff report. This motion was moved by trustee Agnew, may I, sorry, Vice Chair Agnew. May I have a second?
I'll second, trustee Guzzo.
Uh, okay, uh, I just heard that Vice Chair Agnew wanted to withdraw the motion.
Yes.
So Vice Chair Agnew, do you want to withdraw the motion? I'll give you that.
I wanted to withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you, uh, Vice Chair Agnew. Motion is withdrawn. We shall now move on to item number ten. Staff reports. The first item is school resource, resource officer program. HCDSB school liaison officer program. Superintendent Cordero, Superintendent Cordero, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before I begin, I want to acknowledge, uh, the contributions of my colleagues in preparing, uh, this report in alphabetical order. I'd like to acknowledge this, Colomore, the Chief Officer for Research and Development Services, Superintendents of Education, Mr. Kroll and Ms. Denalfo, as well as our Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity, Ms. Jaya Ramen. This report is linked to our strategic priority of belonging, embracing relationships and sustaining safe, welcoming schools. The purpose of this report is in response to Resolution two fifty-three twenty-one. Be it resolved that the school resource officer program be reviewed to determine whether the program has fulfilled its mandate by December first, twenty twenty-one. To provide some background information, the core objectives of the school liaison officer program at the Halton Catholic District School Board is, or officers are assigned to sworn police officers to work in Halton Region's school to develop positive relationships with youth and to enhance perceptions of safety and security in schools and the community. School liaison officers take the lead in establishing programs to prevent school victimization and violence through social development. In that capacity, school liaison officers work directly with school administrators, parents, and the community to ensure that the youth are either on the right path to a positive future or that they can get back to that right path. Past research on school resource officer programs has been conducted on three areas. One, the impact of school resource officer programs on the reduction of crime and violence. Two, the impact of school resource officer programs on perceptions of safety. And three, the impact of school resource officer programs on police-student relations. Petrosini et al. two thousand and twelve concluded, "The evidence base in terms of, of evaluation studies is still premature to make definitive conclusions about whether policing schools has an impact on crime and disorder in the schools." Similar conclusions have been made about the impact of school resource officers on the perceptions of school safety among various stakeholders. In recent years, several evaluations of school resource officer programs in the province of Ontario and more specifically in the Greater Toronto and Hamilton area have revealed these programs have had a negative systemic impact on marginalized and vulnerable students. As a result, some school districts have canceled their programs, others have paused, and still others have continued until their review process is complete. In July twenty twenty-one, the Ontario Human Rights Commission released its framework for change to address systemic racism in policing. The commission outlined several steps to address systemic racial discrimination in policing, including the need for the Ministry of Education to direct school boards to review the impact of school resource officer programs in consultation with communities who identify as Black, racialized, Indigenous, or individuals with disabilities. Under comments, the Halton Regional Police Services has a longstanding relationship with the school boards in the Halton Region. Within each district, there are a designated series of SLOs or school liaison officers who work within the schools to offer support to the school administration, students, and caregivers with youth-related issues. School liaison officers receive specialized training and are recruited specifically for these roles, having demonstrated an interest in working with youth. A protocol created in collaboration with Halton Regional Police Services and Halton Region School Boards guides police officers and school staff when responding to incidents within both secondary schools and elementary schools. The program involves eight high school liaison officers assigned full-time to thirty-four high schools and eight elementary school liaison officers assigned full-time to one hundred and forty-three elementary schools in Halton Region, shared among four school districts. The school liaison officers attend schools to engage with students, participate in school events related to public safety, and to provide education on various health curriculum topics to students. In addition, some school liaison officers coach in schools as volunteers and participate in community-building events, such as the annual Welcome Back BBQ, Boys and Girls Nights Inn, and the Year-End Fun Fair. Officers also assist with emergency response drills, for example, lockdown drills and bomb threat evacuation drills, students in crises, and respond to incidents that involve a criminal offense. There are a series of topics that school liaison officers address with students in partnership with school administration and staff. These include bike and road safety, stranger awareness, bullying and respect, crime stoppers, drugs and alcohol education, hate incidents, human trafficking, internet, social media safety, restorative practices, vaping, weapons, and policing as a career choice, to name a few. In recent months, a conscious effort has been made to replace school liaison officers with community partners on topics that the latter group can best address with our students as experts in the field. This includes topics such as drugs and alcohol education, hate incidents, human trafficking, and mental health. In conclusion, currently, there is only anecdotal evidence from school administrators confirming that the Halton Catholic District School Board school liaison officer program has fulfilled its mandate. There is no board data on the, on the impact of the school liaison officer program on students, and in particular, students who identify as Black, racialized, or Indigenous, and students with And in particular, students who identify as black, racialized, or indigenous, and students with disabilities. To accurately determine whether the program has fulfilled its mandate, further data collection and analysis is required. The Halton Catholic District School Boards Research and Development Services. In collaboration with the Offices of School Services and Human Rights and Equity have developed a police visit tracking application. Beginning on January the third, two thousand and twenty-two, all school administrators will be required. To use this application to report police visits to their schools. This will enable the collection of data on the nature and frequency of School Liaison Officers. Presence in our HCDSB schools. In addition, Research and Development Services will develop a program evaluation plan. To measure the impact of the School Liaison Officer Program. Data sources will include surveys and or focus groups in late April to mid-May. To solicit feedback from community members on the interactions and perceptions of School Liaison Officers. Application data and other school-based data available. The triangulation of data will be used to determine whether the School Liaison Officer Program. Has fulfilled its board mandate. That concludes my report. I welcome any questions.
Thank you Superintendent Cordiero. On the speaker's list, we have trustee Guzzo. But before that, I'm just doing a time check with ten, ten twenty. We have a few more items on the agenda, so I'd like to push that. So trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Trust, Mr. Chair. I have a lot of questions, so I will ask my two. And then I will seed and go back into line for other trustees to ask. So Superintendent Cordiero, you say that we only have anecdotal information from administrators. And we're talking about administrators and you heard what we just said about, we're talking about administrators who. We have no representation for many of the marginalized groups that would who would be impacted by the SRO position. Why January third, two thousand and twenty-two? This motion came to the board in September. You, if you knew you didn't have the data, why are we waiting until January, two thousand and twenty-two? And why are you waiting until December to come back to us to tell us that you don't have the information? I'm confused as to why that took three months to come to this board table.
Superintendent Cordiero.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the question, trustee Guzzo. The app, the police visit app, uh, tracking application takes time to develop. It was first initiated in September two thousand and nineteen. But because of the. Conditions or the transfer transition into remote learning that came about as a result of the pandemic, the application ceased.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry Superintendent Cordiero, I'm going to stop you. I apologize for interrupting, but that's not, that's not my question. No, no, that's not my question, and I don't, I, I don't need you to go on about the app. My question is, no, no, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Can I, can you hear me out?
I have a point of order.
Trustee Yan Tomasi, let me first finish my statement. Trustee Guzzo, you will address the questions to the chair.
Okay, Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I don't mean to interrupt. He's not, he's actually, I'm not asking about the app. He said he made reference to not having data. He knew that in September. We didn't just find that out in December. Why weren't we told that immediately? Why did we have to wait till December to be told we have no information is the question.
Yes, so we have a point of order here which takes precedent over that. So trustee Yan Tomasi, you have a point of order. Can you state which bylaw has been broken, which procedural bylaw?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you allow me, the agenda, as you know. For policy and policy development is not set by the superintendent that's reporting tonight. That particular function is done by the secretary in conjunction with the policy person. The requests flow from the secretary of the board to the specific superintendent.
Trustee Yan Tomasi, I do not hear your, your procedural bylaw that we have broken. So I ruled that your point of order.
I did state the procedural bylaw. What I stated was.
Can you give me the number, please?
At our board. Goes from the secretary to the board in his role as director. And he sends out what is to come back to the board. Other than the board ourselves that make requests for reports.
Thank you. Give me the bylaw number, please.
We do not have it in bylaws, Mr. Chair. If you look at your bylaws, it doesn't speak to it.
Thank you. So I ruled that your point of order is out of order. Your point of order is out of order. So we shall move on to trustee Guzzo's question. Trustee Guzzo, you asked a question and I forgot the question.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question was, I'm not asking about the app. I was specifically asking if we knew we didn't have this information. In September, when the motion came, why did we wait till December to say, to come back to this board to tell us that we didn't? I, it's a bit counterproductive to, to say that. That's, that's my first, that's my first question that I'd like the answer.
Let me get that answer. Superintendent Cordiero, do you have the answer to the question? Specific answer to the specific question.
Sure, and my apologies when trustee Guzzo had mentioned January third, I thought she was referencing the app per se. So it, there was a time where we, as a senior admin team. We had to discuss what data was in existence within the board to determine whether or not. We could substantiate whether we have met the man, the, the School Liaison Officer Program has met the mandate. All the data that we could collect was anecdotal in nature. And the overwhelming response from school administrators to which that anecdotal data came from. Was overwhelmingly positive about the existence of the School Liaison Officers Program. However, recognizing that that is anecdotal in, only in nature. And it only reflects one stakeholder group within the larger context of the board. We then undertook a plan to collect additional data. Working with communicate, with Research and Development Services, an application was developed. The earliest that application could be implemented was January the third. The earliest that we could implement the surveys out to the community of families. Would begin in mid-April to late May. And at that point in time, we would then conduct those focus groups. Within the various municipalities and communities to get further data. To which then Research and Development Services can collect, triangulate. And give a more succinct response to whether the School Liaison Officer Program is meeting our mandate or not. So some of it is logistics, some of it is technological, some of it is a gap in not having prior. Data collection, and some of it is simply the timing and the responsibilities. That afford peoples in research and development and in other areas, the opportunity to collect that data. In a way that is thorough and is comprehensive and extends to as many families and different stakeholders as possible.
Follow up question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, your second question.
Thank you, Chair. So you make mention that you, you didn't reach out to some groups and that you make mention to some of the boards, some boards, you say. Have either paused or discontinued it. I believe that's twenty boards. Can you tell me, have, did you reach out to those boards to ask them why they paused it? Or what their rationale was for discontinuing it? And if any of those are in our surrounding area.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Guzzo. I did reach out to some of our. Adjacent districts and also the districts to which we partner up within our Halton Region. The School Liaison Officer Program is shared between ourselves, our Co-Termnis Board, the French Public Board, and the French Catholic Board. I reached out to those three districts and they were quite satisfied with the program. None of them had put their, the Liaison Officer Program on pause or had canceled. I also reached out to the school boards in Hamilton District and Hamilton Catholic. The police services in Hamilton had removed their services. From the school board in Hamilton District. Hamilton Wentworth Catholic still continues the program, though it's very much in a modified state. As a result of police services withdrawing their own program from the school services. In both Niagara Catholic and Niagara Public, the School Liaison Officer or School Resource Officer Programs continue. Waterloo Catholic, the police services put their. Their program on pause upon further review. Upper Grant canceled their program upon their review. There are certain districts who continue the program and will make a decision at the conclusion of their review. There are other districts who chose to cancel upon the conclusion of their review.
Sorry, just to clarify and question, Mr. Chair.
Trustee, trustee Guzzo, is it the same line of questioning or?
It's a, it's a clarifying. It's clarifying. He mentioned some boards, but he left out Peel. He left out Dufferin Peel, Dufferin Catholic, sorry Peel, Durham Catholic, Toronto Catholic. Which to me, those would be surrounding boards, not just Hamilton. But and ones that are terminated were Hamilton District, Ottawa Carlton, Peel District, Public, those were actually terminated. So, and the list goes on. You know, I would have been interested to hear what their rationale, and that was my question when you, did you reach out to those specific boards? I wasn't referring to the boards that are co-terminus boards. I was referring to neighboring boards.
So when you said he, you, you meant Superintendent Cordiero.
Sorry, Superintendent Cordiero, yes. Well, the question is to you, Mr. Chair. Isn't that what you asked me to do?
Yes, yes. So Superintendent Cordiero, do you have an answer to that, why they were left out?
I did my very best.
Superintendent Cordiero, Director Daly, Director Daly would like to talk. I'll, I'll pause you for a second, Director Daly.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I don't believe that the intention was to leave anybody out. There's no doubt that many boards in the province, sorry, yeah, many boards in the province and or many. Police districts have ended their relationships with boards. Including the ones that Superintendent Cordiero mentioned and a number of others, Peel, Dufferin Peel, Ottawa, Ottawa Catholic. There are a number of boards who, who have ended that relationship. Or at the very least are reviewing the relationship. There was, there was no intent to try and minimize. What's going on in boards around us. I think what, what does come out in the report is that while we can look to other boards. And other jurisdictions, we don't yet have data specific to our board. In our mind as a senior team to make a determination as to whether or not the program's fulfilling its mandate.
Thank you, Director Daly. Superintendent Cordiero, you want to add anything to that or we'll go down the speaker's list? We have a long speaker's list there.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the request, the ask, but I think Director Daly's response is, is complete.
Thank you. We will now move to trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy on the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. We, we want to make database decisions, which obviously are critical. You know, we're increasingly coming across the same issue that we don't have data, but we're working on that and we're changing that. So I guess what concerns me now is, is if we look with a broader lens at our neighboring boards. And these boards have made decisions to, to pause or cancel their program. Antidote, again, you would think that, that maybe there's something to this. So the challenge that I see, though, if we pause the program because we don't want to continue doing harm, if that is the case. What's our ability to gather data? And then in effect, if you're pausing, you're basically canceling it. So Superintendent Cordiero, I'm not sure, can you, could you speak to that? What, what happens if we pause a program? What, we don't have that, then obviously we can't collect that on something that's paused.
Superintendent Cordiero, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's, it's exactly right. I think. Trustee Murphy captured the essence of it. If, if the program doesn't exist or it's paused. Then you can't collect that and you can't make an honest conclusion of whether or not the mandate was fulfilled or not. And that was the request put to me. It was a review of whether the School Liaison Officer Program was fulfilling its mandate in Halton. I took it upon myself to reach out to other school boards to, to help better discern. You know, the effectiveness of School Liaison Officer Programs as a whole. But even then, their stories, their narrative are specific to their story and their narrative. There are similarities because they're adjacent districts. But it doesn't necessarily mean that the data that they collect is always aligned with the data that we collect. It may turn out that way, it may not.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Do you have a follow-up?
I guess maybe it would be just a comment that, that in the interim, because again, it's hard to make an informed decision without, without that. And then obviously if we pause, we're going to have, be in a difficult spot. Is there a possibility of reaching out to some community partners, broaden our discussion at this point? Again, it will be anecdotal data or information at this point, but it may give us a better overall view of. Of where we're at with this program until we can get the hard data that we need.
Superintendent Cordiero.
Yeah, again, I did reach out to some of our. School districts who share in the Halton Regional Police Services Liaison Officer Program. Our Co-Terminus Board, our French Public and our French Catholic Board. Who utilize, we share the same School Liaison Officers and the anecdotal information shared. By their school senior staff was positive and constructive.
Thank you. Superintendent, sorry, trustee Murphy, is that answer your question?
Yes, I was thinking more along the lines, not of the school, but in different community groups and what have you. But we can, we can have that discussion offline.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have the speaker's list, trustee De Rosa, Vice Chair Agnew, and trustee Yan Tomasi. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm, I don't think I, I, I heard Superintendent Cordiero go through his whole report. Before we started going down this line of questioning. I would have only a comment to this is. Is that this type of work does take time. It is not ideal. We're trying to transition to scientific method of assessing. But I would suggest that let's not minimize the anecdotal, the anecdotal information that may be within our own board. As well as that compared to the other board. What we have here and what we have to understand that equally important to the data that may be collected. Once we have the app and the mechanism in place. What's equally important is the twenty-five years of experience that teachers, vice principals. And people in the front.
Did we lose you there or you finished?
Oh my God, sorry. I, my mic was off. My apologies.
Your last sentence, fully your last sentence, repeat.
I will, I, I said all nice things, but I'll say them again. So I started by saying that I didn't finish necessarily, I didn't. So I started by saying that I didn't finish necessarily, I didn't think necessarily that Superintendent Cordero was afforded the opportunity to finish his report. And I look to hopefully listen to that. With regards to the line of questioning, I, I understand the importance of data collection in this and to be able to evaluate the programs that we have. And these, this is certainly an important program, but I want to make sure that we do not minimize the anecdotal information that we do have at our, at our disposal. That is the consequence of 20, 25 years' experience of our teachers in the front line in liaising with these people and the effectiveness of the work that they do. So that to me is equally important. And I think I would welcome, as you finished your report, Superintendent Cordero, to maybe address what the overall program is, even though it is anecdotal and the benefits it's had. So I think when staff are required to do some work, they need to be afforded the time to be able to bring work to us in a fulsome and wholesome report. So I guess there's no question in there, just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You identified there's no question. Thank you. So moving on down the speakers list, Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floors.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I just think it's important to note, and I don't really have a specific question for, for anybody, but just to comment that, you know, certainly recognizing that this has been a longstanding program, but also recognizing that the landscape in our schools has changed. The population has changed, our communities and our societies have changed. And so, you know, I definitely don't want to negate the anecdotal information that we have, but as Superintendent Cordero did point out, it is just from one group. It's from one stakeholder. We know that this program impacts numerous stakeholders. And I, you know, I just think in the absence of data, which I agree we have to gather, it's really difficult right now to, in my opinion, support and continue this program as it is right now without having some of that information. We have seen again, boards around us that have either paused or, or canceled the program. And I'm not suggesting at this point that, you know, we, we necessarily need to follow suit. But there's obviously a reason why they have done that. And I don't think that we can ignore that. We, again, we, we need to understand from all of our stakeholders, especially those in our marginalized populations and how they are being affected by this program. And I, I think the continuation of that program and the absence of that information is probably not the best idea. So just, just food for thought on where we can stand on the program.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Moving down the list, we have Trustee Antamasi. Trustee Antamasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, the Secretary Daly. Can you please tell us, what is the reporting protocol? And who schedules the report and assigns them to the superintendents?
Director Daly, do you have enough information to answer that or you want some more information?
No, I don't think so. I think I understand the question. And thank you, Trustee Antamasi. I, I think I'm understanding what you're saying. When a, when a request for staff report, or sorry, when direction for staff report comes to the senior admin, how does that actually, how's it determined who, who works on the report and the timing around it? So it really depends on the nature of the motion.
Sorry, I'm not asking who you're assigning it to. I'm asking the protocol, how you send it out.
Trustee Antamasi, let's be respectful. Director Daly is speaking. Once he's done, you can raise your question. Thank you. Go ahead, Director Daly.
So when a request or direction for staff report comes, sometimes it's, it's kind of predetermined which superintendent or senior staff might address it, depending on their portfolio. Oftentimes, it might be a combined effort. And this is certainly the case with this staff report. As Superintendent Cordero mentioned, there was a number of people who contributed to the report. Ultimately, when it comes back to board, it's determined by a couple of things. One could be the motion itself. So there might be a specific date to report back to board. If the motion is a little bit more open-ended, then in consultation with the chair and the vice chair, we would look at when we could most reasonably complete the report and then bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Antamasi, you were in the middle of saying something. What was that?
Yes, I was, Mr. Chair, and thank you for recognizing me. Is this a follow-up or can I clarify?
Clarify.
Address the response from the secretary.
Clarify, please.
So my question was specific. Secretary Daly, when, who assigns the reports? And when was the report assigned to be submitted to you to Supervisory Officer Cordero?
Director Daly?
Ultimately, I assign reports to senior staff. We've had a number of draft reports over the last couple of weeks to look at the response to this. So if your question is, do I assign that work, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
When was it assigned to Mr. Cordero or Supervisory Officer Cordero?
I couldn't answer that off the top of my head. Maybe Superintendent Cordero could. As I said, a number of people listed in the report were responsible for putting it together. And I know that senior staff have been working on it for some time.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee Antamasi, your follow-up question now.
Thank you. Secretary Daly, to you again. Who is responsible to bring reports to the board? Who is the person responsible to bring and is the only employee of the board that brings reports directly to the board?
Director Daly?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. All reports that come to the board are approved by the Director of Education.
Correct. So it's your response, you're the only employee of the board that reports directly to the board. If we look at the follow-through at the back of each report, the report is submitted to you, you and the chair put it on the agenda, at which time it gets delivered to the board. Is that not correct?
I think that's what I just said. All reports that come to the board from senior staff are approved by me. Some reports are time-bound based on the motion that's given. Some reports are, are delivered to the board in consultation with the chair and the vice chair, depending on when that work can get completed.
Point of clarification. Under the Education Act, who is the sole person that reports directly to the board?
Trustee Antamasi. Trustee Antamasi, we are going on a tangent.
No, it's not a tangent. I've asked for the question, who is the, who has the sole authority to report directly to the board? The Education Act states, the only employee of the board that's responsible and reports directly to the board is the Director of Education in his role as secretary. I want an answer from the secretary to that particular question.
Trustee Antamasi, I heard exactly that answer. I'm not sure what else you're looking for. So, so if you have something specific.
What does the Education Act say insofar as reports directly to the board?
We are not, we are respecting the time of all the peoples in this board meeting and all those watching. We are not going to the Education Act. We don't need to go there.
Mr. Chair, you overruled me when I asked for a point of order. And I was trying to get to who is responsible to report. The only employee of the board that reports directly to the board under the Education Act is the Director of Education in his role as secretary. He then, if you look at the back of each report, he's at the end. He submits the report to us and you agree to that particular report because you put it on the agenda. So why are we asking supervisory office, a supervisory officer, why the report came so late? That question should have gone to the Director of Education in his role as secretary to the board.
Okay, good. Thank you. We shall now move forward. We do not have any more speakers on the list. I want to get to the next item.
Sorry. I, I'm, I actually have my hand up next after Trustee Antamasi, Chair Stewart.
I don't see, oh, my screen was frozen here. Okay, so we have Trustee Guzzo, Trustee Guzzo, then Trustee De Rosa, Trustee Ohonzenata. We have a big list there. Sorry, my screen was frozen for a minute. Trustee Guzzo, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So my question then will be to Director Daly. Director Daly, there are a couple of groups. Parents of Black Children, ANCA, which stands for the African-Canadian National Coalition Against Hate, Oppression, and Racism, and Halton Black Parents. Have you heard from them at all in regards to this position and what their position is for their, their communities?
Director Daly?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So I, I did meet with, with representatives of the groups you mentioned this week, last, this week. And their position was clear that they felt that any police presence, I guess I'm going to paraphrase. They, they felt that the school liaison officer programs or the school resource officer programs were having a negative impact on the students and families that they represent.
Trustee Guzzo, your follow-up question?
I do. So just to be a little bit more specific, I think some of the comments that were made that, that it is targeted, that there's intergenerational trauma that is caused. And that is a whole piece that they feel that there is grooming and that there are 20 school boards across the province that have stalked this. And that, that it targets black children. And that they asked for you to look specifically to other boards. But the ask was to, and I believe they used the word, it's an emergency that we need to act.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. I will jump down the list to those speakers who have not spoken. Trustee Ohonzenata, and then I'll come back. Trustee Ohonzenata, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, the ability to speak to this topic. Before Trustee Guzzo was speaking, I, I wanted to look at this in a different way to Superintendent. In regards to the mandate, the mandate is to see, is to see if the SROs are fulfilling their mandate. But what we haven't discussed, well, maybe just recently with the last discussion, is that what any negative impacts that these school resource officers could be impacting our, our communities at large. So I mean, it was just spoken to by Trustee Guzzo and Director Daly, but I just want to offer that up. The mandate that was given on this report was to see if, if these SROs are fulfilling their mandate. But there's another part of this, what are the negative connotations to having SROs in our school? And, you know, as Trustee Murphy indicated, we need the data. Anecdotal is pieces of data, but not all the data to make an informed decision. So really, it's just a comment, but thank you for my time.
Thank you, Trustee Ohonzenata. I'll move on to Trustee O'Brien. He's not spoken on this. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Trustee Guzzo, for bringing up, that was my question actually. Getting a sense of what some of these grassroots organizations are actually saying it. Thank you, Director Daly, for responding to that. And thank you for, Trustee Guzzo, for giving that extra meat on, on actually what was said. I, I, I really am anxious to hear what, what the grassroots people are saying about this, why it has been such a big issue. And I want to thank that. And any more information like that, I think is really important just before we move forward. Thank you so much.
Brian, going back to the list now, we have Trustee De Rosa and followed by, Trustee De Rosa again. So Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've lined myself up a number of times to make sure I do get to ask a question because before I didn't. So I have a very simple question. How long Superintendent Daly or, sorry, Director Daly or Superintendent Cordero? How long has this program been in, been in place?
Director Daly, like to answer that?
I hate to say my answer is for as long as I can remember, but for as long as I can remember, I believe we've had a school liaison officer program for at least 20 years, but maybe Superintendent Cordero could, has a more specific number. I'm not sure if he does or not.
Cordero, you have the same answer.
Through you, Mr. Chair. To, to Director Daly, my response would be the same. As long as I can remember, and I think we, we both date to the early 90s, so 30 years perhaps.
Thank you.
May I have a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I was going to say that. Trustee De Rosa, you have the follow-up.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. I didn't want to put words in your mouth. But my, my follow-up question is very simple is we've been talking about anecdotal information, but I would suggest that there are a whole bunch of people who have worked with this program for as long as they can remember and have a lot to say about it. I would, I don't know if your report, we didn't get to that point. I don't know if tonight you were going to get to make a comment with respect to the, the experience as far as they can remember. And I'm sure that there have been good things mostly, but also bad things as there is in, in, in every situation. I, I, first of all, if you, if you feel comfortable to make a comment with respect to your experience over the last, as far as you can remember, I think that would be useful. Without holding you to any, any particular result or end result of one, of what this report or when the data collection is finished. But I would certainly want to hear what the experience has been in the past. Because we cannot minimize, you know, 25, 30, 40 years of, of experience with this thing. Superintendent Cordero?
Thank you, Trustee De Rosa. Not sure Superintendent Cordero, he vanished from the screen. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I think I'm showing.
You have any comment on that?
Yeah, like I think the climate has changed. I think there's a lot of good points. The climate has changed. Certainly, I think, as I said earlier, the, the majority of school administrators would effectively say that it, that the relationship between school liaison officers and schools have, have done a lot of good work. There are areas where we recognize as school districts and Halton Regional Police Services has shared this opinion as well, where there are areas where we are wise to continue to branch out to community partners outside of Halton Regional Police Services who have expertise in fields that they don't and are well-received by communities marginalized and vulnerable in our schools. And we continue to move in that direction in the areas of human trafficking, in the areas of drug and alcohol education, in the, in many other areas. You know, mental health and so forth. The uniqueness of our school liaison officer program that distinguishes us from other school re, school resource officer programs is that we don't have liaison officers with offices in our schools. We don't have them randomly walk into our buildings. They're there either because there is a community, a, a police-initiated investigation, which they notify the school and they would inform the schools in advance, or they're called in because there is an investigation that requires their address as per our school board police protocols, which is mandated by, you know, the Ministry of Education. So it's, it's very much interactive. There isn't a police presence that is consistently roaming the hallways or, or that. It's very much a response and reaction to each other's calls or requests. We need to learn more about the frequency of that. We need to learn more about the nature of those calls and those communications, the kinds of incidents. We need to learn more about what families and students feel, what other stakeholders in our board feel about it. what other stakeholders in our board feel about it. We need to learn more about how particular marginalized and vulnerable communities feel about it. Surveys, focused groups, targeting different communities, specifically who have historical interactions that haven't been positive with police communities, would be certainly on our, in our collection data ambitions. So it's tough for, I think, any one of us to comment other than our own personal experiences, and that varies. Hence, the importance of more information and a clearer review that impacts a broad variety of people, and in particular, those marginalized and vulnerable communities.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one closing comment. I promise I'll be brief. I would say that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have two minutes.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. I think that was very beneficial. I would, I don't know whether this is a question, or maybe you can address it. Would you estimate at least that there is some racial representation within the community of these service providers? And the other thing is, well, I'll leave it to that question. And based on what I'm hearing, I would say, I would say that this is not a small exercise to get a true picture of what this program is all about, and certainly not a speedy one. So I personally would favor taking the proper amount of time to do this and do a fulsome job to get a proper representation of this very important program.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. We are at 10:59. We need to take a vote to extend to 11:30.
I can move, Mr. Chair.
I will second. Trustee Guzzo, and seconded by trustee De Rosa. There are a couple of items I need to get, would like to get to, student trustee report and school update, so kindly support. Okay, going down the list. Trustee Yan Tomasi. How do you vote?
There's a delay, Mr. Chair.
Sure. In favor, thank you. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Ohonzenata?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masti Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. So it's unanimous. The motion carries. We were with Superintendent Cordero, who was going to answer a question. Superintendent Cordero.
I just, the diversity that exists already within this group, if you could comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so thank you, trustee De Rosa, through you, Chair. I don't have the actual numbers or a composition of the 16 liaison officers, eight in the high schools and eight in the elementary schools that are shared between the four districts. But I can say that there are members of those liaison groups that are black, that are racialized, and have had, all of whom have had specific training to work with youth in general and students of, you know, indigenous communities, students with disabilities and so forth. Exact numbers, I don't have.
That's okay. I've got a good feel of what this is. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa and Superintendent Cordero. We have one more speaker on the list. Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, I'll hand it to you, and then we'll change, we'll move on to the next item. Trustee Guzzo, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. You know, I can't help but question the most important people that are impacted by this decision and this report. And out of it, nobody has been spoken to. So I'd like to put a motion forward that be it resolved, that Director of Education direct the board to pause the SRO program and conduct information forums with community groups, partners of racialized, marginalized groups specifically, parents, students, and police services and staff by April 2022, at which time we can then return back to the board table and review. I think for us to say we should continue something without having the information, when it could be, there could be issues with it, specifically to our students, I think that that speaks volumes. So I will, yes, I can absolutely put it in the chat box.
Please, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion put forward by trustee Guzzo. I will need a second for that. Vice Chair Agnew seconds it. We'll just wait for the motion to come up on the screen. Trustee Guzzo, are you typing it out, or you have it ready?
I am typing it, trustee George. I'm not that fast.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you keep interrupting me, it's going to slow me down.
Yeah, we have, I want to get to the student trustee update.
Mr. Chair, you don't get to rush me.
I'm trying to rush you.
You're not allowed to. Okay, it's done. And I apologize if there's any spelling mistakes. I'm having a difficult time seeing this evening.
Be it resolved that the Director of Education direct staff to pause the SRO program until such time as information forums can be held with community group, in bracket, racialized, parents, students, police service, and staff on the program and effectiveness in schools by April 2022. At this time, it shall be brought back to the board for further review. You see the motion up there. The motion is put forward by trustee Guzzo, seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Guzzo, do you want to speak to it? I think you have spoken a lot.
And, Mr. Chair, you don't get to tell me.
Okay.
You don't get to make that decision for me.
Do you want to speak to it? Go ahead.
Listen, I've said a lot tonight. I can't, I can't speak to viability of a program when the only information we have is anecdotal, and it's from men, from groups of of staff that are white and in positions of power. The issue is, and the point is, is we want to make sure that what we are doing is not causing any harm. And I'm not saying that, I'm not, I can't say that it is, because it doesn't impact me. However, those that it does impact are the ones that we should be speaking to. And I heard loud and clear from groups that are impacted by this, that it does, and that, you know, the question is, why is it even continuing? From a human rights perspective, the whole point of human rights is, is it's not about the majority. It's about that minority. That's why human rights, that's why the Human Rights Commission exists. That's why it's there, is to protect those who have no voice, because they are the minority. And there is a reason for that. And so that's who we need to listen to, and that's who we have not listened to. So that is why I hope that you can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. On the speaker's list, trustee De Rosa, trustee Kate, trustee Bowie, and trustee Carabella. Trustee De Rosa, you're the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do I have three minutes? Is that correct?
We have three minutes.
Can we put the counter on, please? That helps me a lot.
Yes, Rosie? Okay, so, yeah, it's being shared by Ms. Wyndham, but I will let you know when three minutes is up. How's that?
Absolutely. I have full confidence.
Okay, and I'd like to see you on the screen if possible.
So, Mr. Chair, I I'm being compelled to make a decision to pause a program, which will essentially put it on hold while we gather information, a program which has been in effect in place as long as anyone can remember, a program that is has evolved over the years, and from what I understand, as a representation of minority groups. Maybe there could be more, but certainly it's not completely a collection of white people, just like trustee Guzzo referred to this assembly tonight. And frankly, I, I'm not going to make an issue out of this, but there's some, there's some degree of resentment, resentment to the implication that just because I'm white, I would not reach a proper and fair conclusion on a question like this. So, but I'll leave that, I'll leave that said, just in response to that reference. So, I, this is a program which is important. It's been around a long, long time, and I think it has helped our students, our staff, and whoever else these individuals relate with. I'm not suggesting that there aren't things that can be fixed. I'm not suggesting that there aren't ways it could evolve. But what's being proposed by this motion is that we essentially eliminate it before we actually get the information. And that, to me, Mr. Chair, is a presumption of an end result, which is not what we are in the business of doing. If we are advocating collecting information in order to make best decisions, we need to afford the staff to be able to collect that information. And I will not be supporting this motion on the basis of, let's wait and see what the information is going to be. I want to see it first. I want to evaluate it objectively, and then I want to be able to make a decision. I urge my fellow trustees to consider, consider it in the same manner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I hope that was not the full three minutes.
No, you still have a few seconds left.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. So just a reminder to trustees too, when, I would prefer that you refer to trustees by colleague. Do not refer to them by name, okay? It's not, I think it's better to call each other by colleague. Sometimes gets too personal.
This was not personal.
No, that's fine.
I apologize for the reference. I will correct that, but it certainly, under no circumstances was this personal. And this has to be absolutely clear from my point of view.
Appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Trustee Bowie, you're next on the list. Trustee Bowie and trustee Carabella, trustee Tokiwa. So trustee Bowie on the list, on speaker's list.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and through you. I know that, you know, as student trustees, we've heard from students with diverse experiences, interacting with the SRO program. And I'm not a racialized student myself, so I won't speak to the experience with this program. As I've heard it from students now, I definitely would be in favor of ending or reevaluating the way in which we conduct this program. That being said, I would like further data, just as I know a lot of trustees would. And I'd like to be able to hear, I think the preparations that senior staff have made are amazing and will allow us to get a full and wholesome picture of how, and of how, of how this program is working in our schools. And my only hesitation with this motion is that potentially pausing the program might impact that ability for data collection based on the provisions that were outlined by Mr. Cordero's report. So for that reason, I will be opposing this motion. But, you know, our students have diverse experiences, and I'd like those students to be able to share a complete perspective and for us to be able to come back and make a decision that's hopefully long-lasting and maybe even include some provisions to better the experience for these students in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Well said. Trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would echo what trustee Tokiwa just said, and trustee De Rosa. I don't think we need to pause it to be able to collect information and seek out input and have that prepared as it was suggested in already the report of Superintendent Cordero for April and May. So, and that we are now putting into effect, starting in January, the process that he mentioned. So that's the thing, is if you pause it, then you miss out on gathering data while it's going on as well. So, and as there are positive anecdotal testimony and negative, this is what we will be, we will be weighing. So, that's right. That's what I wanted to say, that I won't be supporting this at this time.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Moving down the list, we have the speaker's list, trustee Tokiwa, and then trustee Murphy. Trustee Tokiwa, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to provide some perspective as a student. So personally, I would not have been aware that the SRO program exists if I was uninformed by the board. This makes me wonder what the effectiveness of the program is, if it isn't reaching all students in some way, shape, or form, even a notion of existence. While I have not interacted with people that work in the SRO program, I can say that I'd be in favor of pausing and reevaluating the program. Just because the program has been in effect for many years does not mean that is good. I'm not suggesting that it isn't, but the longevity of the program cannot be an indicator of its positive impacts on the students. As a person of color or a person of a marginalized group, I would understand the concerns that students in racialized groups have and the fear that it could perpetuate in the schools. And I think that it's important that we don't continue it if we don't have the resources to prove that it isn't. Because in the time that it takes to reevaluate this program, it might be doing damage on students. I mean, April, December to April is five, five to six months, and that's a long time for, you know, students to still be possibly experiencing some sort of harm. And they may also be experiencing good things. But I think our first priority should always be to prevent those marginalized students from experiencing harm if we don't have the data to prove that it isn't.
Thank you, trustee Tokiwa. I see trustee Yan Tomasi says he's been in the queue since 11:03. I might have missed him. Trustee Murphy, before you speak, I'll just give the floor to trustee Yan Tomasi, if you don't mind. Trustee Yan Tomasi?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for recognizing me, albeit late. So this particular program, the Liaison Officer Program, is mandated and funded by the ministry. I'm just wondering how trustees hope to override something that is mandated by the ministry. Question can go to anyone, um, whether it be Secretary Daley, Superintendent Cordero, or even Supervisory Officer Crowell, who happens to have members of his family in the police department.
Uh, I'll hand the floor to Director Daley and he will, uh, point me in the right direction.
Um, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm not sure the liaison pro, uh, program is mandated by the ministry. Certainly, the ministry does mandate us to have a, uh, a police protocol, uh, between our board and the police. Um, in terms of the funding that might go to the program, I, I don't believe any funding comes to the board directly. Uh, so if there's funding either from the Ministry of Education or other ministries, uh, I don't think that, that funding for this program comes to us. That maybe Superintendent Cordero, uh, could add something to that or Superintendent Lofts from a, from a finance perspective.
Uh, Superintendent Lofts? Are you there? Superintendent Lofts?
Sorry, I was having a hard time getting on.
Yeah. Superintendent Lofts, are you there? Okay, I can see you. Go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I don't really have that information available right now. Um, I probably have to take that back and, and get back to the trustees.
I, uh, Mr. Chair, through you, I have that information. So Safe Schools, the supplement monies, is provided to the school boards by the Ministry of Edu, of Education to fund specifically the Liaison Officer Program. The Liaison Pro, uh, Officer Program may go by different names, but it's a same program. It's the relationship between the community and the police and/or the school community and the police. So, I submit to everyone, to my colleagues, that we do have, we have no jurisdiction over this particular entity, whether to continue it, stop it, pause it, or do any, any of that.
Yantamasi, uh, Trustee Murphy is next on the list. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor. Uh, before you start, Trustee Murphy, uh, trustees, please refrain from putting comments in the chat box. Like, keep them nice and clean. Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, this is a, this is a tough one, tough one. We, we want data and we know that, um, it's important to have the data, but we haven't, uh, reached out to understand what the lived experience is. And technically, people can say, well, lived experience is anecdotal because it wasn't filled out on a form and documented and notarized and what have you. But, but, uh, how could we not value that lived experience from, uh, coming from a person who is racialized? So to me, even though, uh, it is a difficult decision, I think we have to err on the side of caution and make sure that during this interim period, we're not doing any more harm, uh, until we can, we can have those conversations and understand what the lived experience is. Um, but yeah, it's, it, it is, uh, it is a tough one. So, with that in mind, and, and the concern of, of erring on the side of not doing any more harm, I'm going to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. I see nobody else on the speaker list. Trustee Guzo, it's your motion. You get to close.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I know there's been a couple of comments stated, but, uh, the, uh, Halton Community Services Directory talks about the Halton, Halton Regional Police Services and this program, the, specifically the High School Liaison Officer. Um, and where it is and who it's assigned, uh, um, who it's assigned to, uh, and it is funded by the region. It is not mandated. Just a, a, a couple of things, you know, and one of my colleagues made reference to it and, and, and it's true. None of us have lived experiences. And again, to sit here, I sit from a, from a, uh, I, I come from, uh, a point of privilege. I am a white woman. Um, I have never had to experience any of these things. Um, so what I do know is, is that we have a very diverse student population. And I know that there's concerns and I know that we have to listen to those concerns. And if it means that we put this on pause to get more information, then I think that's what we need to do. Um, anecdotal inform, anecdotal support or data from our admins and, and not trying to dismiss them. But that's not enough to say, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing? Are we looking after our most vulnerable students, our marginalized students? The Human Rights Commission refers and talks about systemic racism. And it makes reference to, to what we're talking about here. And by us not taking advantage of listening to our community groups and our students and parents, then what are we saying? What are we enabling here in our board? So I implore you all to do the right thing and to look at this from, from an aspect of getting the data from those that are impacted most. And to remember that the reason why the Human Rights Commission was taking place was to, to look after the minority, not the majority. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Guzo. Trustee De Rosa, we have closed debate. Uh, I will now take this.
That was a, that was a quick fingers. I didn't intend to, uh,
Okay, okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I just wanted to clarify, I'm not ignoring you. I'm taking it to a vote right now.
I've, I've said what I have to say, no problem.
Thank you. I shall start with, uh, Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, how do you vote on the motion?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee Unzanota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Boy?
Come back to me.
Okay, uh, we'll do Trustee Masri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew? Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee De Rosa?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Trustee Guzo?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee, uh, Yantamasi?
Opposed, it's not within our purview.
Thank you. Trustee, uh, Boy?
Opposed.
So it looks like, uh, we have four, four, and I have to vote, so I shall vote in favor. So it's five to four, motion carries. Uh, thank you for the great discussion. We shall now move on to information items, student trustees update.
Just a point of clarification. You didn't have to vote.
Thank you. Uh, next order of business information items, student trustee update. Uh, student trustees, uh, Boy, Masri Amar, Tokiwa, you have the floor to present your report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'll put my camera on. I'm sorry if I look a little bit tired. I have a chemistry test tomorrow and I've been studying. Okay, so for the three sections today, I know I'm gonna have to get interrupted in a couple of minutes, so just feel free to, uh, jump in, Chair, when we have to vote to continue, but I will start with the achieving session. So as, uh, Chair Duarte mentioned earlier in the meeting at our November twenty-third general meeting, um, the chair, the vice chair and the, or former chair, former vice chair and the director came to present to our senators regarding the board, the government structure of the HCSB and the role of student trustees. A lot of our senators said they found it very informative and helped them to understand the structure of our board and sort of their role and how they play into it a lot better, which we were so ecstatic to see because that's been a large part of our mandate is education this year. As well, we're looking forward to our next senate meeting on December fourteenth, where our focus will be on promoting student trustee applications. Our student trustee elections happen in February for allow, to allow for a transition period in which the new student trustees will get to, uh, attend some board meetings and follow us and we'll be able to conference with them to allow them to fulfill their mandates. So recently, as it was announced by the ministry that we will be returning back to semesters, uh, we received a lot of pushback from both the Student Senate and students that we polled and reached out to within our own communities. Many students, um, expressed hesitation and actually expressed that they would have rather stayed with quadmasters for the rest of the year. Um, with many unknown variables, students have been voicing concerns regarding specifically the following, uh, the existence of exams, how they will be accommodated while taking prerequisite cour, prerequisite courses such as advanced functions and calculus at the same time. Many students felt that their timetables weren't set up properly to allow for this change. What these changes will mean for Culp students who have already, who already have placements arranged and how equity will be ensured for students taking in class in second semester as opposed to first and vice versa. A big portion of the apprehension to the return to the semester model is the uncertainty stated above and that grade twelves are the only ones who have actually experienced a full year of semesters. We believe that these concerns must be taken into account to ensure a smooth transition. Specifically, a lot of concerns that we've heard, uh, have come from grade nine and ten students. Um, and grade twelve students are sort of the main groups that we're hearing from. Uh, as grade twelve students, you know, this transition is a lot for them in the year in which they're graduating and trying to get into post-secondary programs. And for our grade nine and ten students, they've never experienced a semester system. So we have them, you know, coming to us saying, what do four courses look like? Will it be, you know, more stressful than usual? And there, there's a lot of uncertainty within our communities there right now.
Uh, can I interrupt for a second? Uh, I'd like to take a vote to extend beyond eleven thirty for thirty minutes and it's got to be unanimous. And, uh, so again, we're in the middle of this report. So, um, Trustee Yantamasi, how do you vote?
Oh, I can move. Sorry, Mr. Chair, I can.
Oh, sorry, I need a mover and second, right? I need a mover. So Trustee Guzo moves, second up? Second up? Vice Chair Agnew, seconds. Uh, Trustee Yantamasi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Uh, opposed.
Trustee Unzanota?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Boy?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee De Rosa? Trustee De Rosa?
Mr. Chair, I have to step away. Are we voting on the student trustee update?
We are voting, student trustee update doesn't have a vote. So we are voting to extend beyond eleven thirty.
No, I'm opposed. I'm opposed.
Uh, I'm in favor. Trustee Guzo?
In favor.
Okay, so motion fails. We have two opposed. Uh, we have moved. Oh, we have to finish this item. Good, I'm learning something. Okay, uh, Trustee Boy, you finished or you, you still have something to say?
Yep, I'll pass it off to Trustee Masri Amar.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, I won't be able to be turning my camera on tonight because I just found out I got accepted into one of my universities and I might have cried a little. So I don't look the best presentable, but I'll be doing believing. So the Catholic Faith and Action Subcommittee at the Senate is organizing the Advent Initiative. The initiative will be educational and it will help to involve and hasten HCSB students during the Advent season. The initiative will be divided into two categories. Number one will be the celebration of the Advent through our student community. The goal is to use the HCSB Student Senate Instagram page to promote the Advent traditions of various cultures. An initial post will be made by the Subcommittee to explain the purpose and then students will have the opportunity to share their traditions during the holiday season. Number two will be preparation for Advent. So what can you do? This will be a short video that will be shared on our social, social media account explaining the meaning of Advent and the importance of reflecting ourselves during the time.
Um, and I will be covering the belonging portion. So at the November twenty-third general meeting of Student Senate, senators heard a presentation from Ms. Jaya Marin, uh, concerning the student census. Students were excited to hear of the census, especially about how it'll help us better understand the makeup of our community, including especially, uh, non-Catholic students and marginalized groups. Additionally, an ad hoc committee was created, uh, chaired by Trustee Tokiwa. The Indigenous Education Ad Hoc Committee will work on initiatives to promote the importance of indigenous education. A motion to have indigenous, have members of the committee appear in a video aimed at promoting indigenous literature courses directed by Sherry was passed and the filming will occur before Christmas break with the hopes of the video hitting secondary schools in the new year in preparation for course selections. The committee also hopes to promote indigenous paint nights and advocate on the importance of indigenous education to students, parents, and the board.
Is that done? Thank you, trustees, student trustees, uh, excellent report. Uh, does anyone have questions? Trustee Carabella, you have questions? You're the floor.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, now I just, I don't remember who was mentioning it, but about taking calculus and functions at the same time. Was that mentioned?
Yes, that was in my section.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, um, uh, my understanding is that calculus requires knowledge from functions. So how, how are those courses being taken at the same time when you sort of need one building on the other?
Yeah, so those were the concerns expressed by students as when timetables were formulated at the beginning of the year under the Quadmaster system. For some students, they would have advanced functions placed in their third quad and then calculus placed in their fourth quad. But now as we are transitioning back to semesters, those two courses will therefore be open at the same time. So the adv, the, their, um, advanced functions course will be in the morning and their calculus course will be in the afternoon, which means that that knowledge won't be transferable. So a lot of students are very apprehensive about that, especially grade twelve students who need those courses for, uh, post-secondary programs because that change, uh, wasn't exactly anticipated when timetables were created. So that's a large concern that many students aren't feeling, aren't being addressed. And potentially, it might be addressed by administrations or guidance in some way, but a lot of students are left wondering if they're gonna have to take a night school course or a summer school course or something to make up for it.
Is there?
Follow up?
My follow-up would be to the superintendent in charge of that, is how would this issue, uh, be addressed with the, with this concern they're bringing forward.
Thank you. I'm not sure who the superintendent is. Director Daley? Superintendent, Superintendent Crowell?
Sure, I can give it a try through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so MCB for you does have as, um, so grade twelve calculus, uh, does have as co-requisite. So you can take, uh, it's sort of, if you look at the ministry document, it says that students can take advanced functions concurrently with calculus and vectors. That it is in a prerequisite. With that said, with every student, we will certainly look, you know, look at their timetables and look to see what we can do to support them in, in getting into the university program or the college program, um, but they're sort of with their pathway. Um, so that's the work that guidance counselors will be doing to sort of support students that may have concerns about their timetables. Um, I can say that we did, we did think about what students' timetables did look like for the full year at the beginning of the year with a possible transition back to semesters, uh, in semester two. Um, but if students do have concerns, they should definitely speak to their school guidance counselor who can help support them.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. Uh, on the speaker's list, Trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Again, very quick fingers.
Okay, I'll take the hand down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done. I'm done for you.
Thank you, Trustee De Rosa. I'll just congratulate, uh, student trustee, uh, Masri Amar for your achievement. And we shall now move to adjournment and closing prayer. Uh, Trustee Murphy? May I, first, may I have a motion to? Okay, okay, no motion to adjourn. We just, uh, move to closing. Trustee Murphy, it's all yours, the floor is yours.
Please join in a sign of our faith in the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. As we end our meeting tonight during the season of Advent, let us pray for the grace we need to live as people of hope. The Advent read symbolizes our growing hope and anticipation that the Lord Jesus The Advent wreath symbolizes our growing hope and anticipation that the Lord Jesus may enter our lives more fully. Let us pray that this wreath may remind us to bring the light of Christ to the darkness of this world. Heavenly Father, your church joyfully awaits the coming of its Savior, who enlightens our hearts and dispels the darkness of ignorance and sin. Pour forth your blessing upon us and upon the candles of the Advent wreath. May their light reflect the splendor of Christ who is Lord forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, everybody. Good night. We had a great meeting. Thank you.